Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, October 12th, 2017. If we could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Always nice to have a full crowd, so thank you. Before we get to the regular business, we do have to approve our consent agenda. So I will make a motion to approve executive session minutes, and there are quite a lot of them, of March 23rd, 2017, June 22nd, 2017, March 9th, 2017, October 13th, 2016, May 31st, 2016, March 24th, 2016, February 25th, 2016, God bless you. February 11th, 2016, February 4th, 2016, October 22nd, 2015, July 30th, 2015, June 1st, 2015, April 9th, 2015, March 12th, 2015, February 26th, 2015, January 8th, 2015, October 23rd, 2014, June 26th, 2014, March 13th, 2014, February 6th, 2014. Also, regular session minutes of September 28th, 2017, and public relations minutes of 9:26, 2017, and acceptance of warrants 15V18 and 14P18.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have our student rep here tonight. Chloe, how are you?
Chloe.
Good. How are you?
Good. How are things going?
Um, pretty good.
Good.
Um, some few things to talk about. Uh, the seniors are having a yoga fundraiser at the Georgetown Yoga Practice tomorrow from 7:00 to 8:30. If you want to sign, I think you have to sign up before then, that's $20. Um, the volleyball fundraiser is the 17th.
Definitely. Okay. So do you want to say something about what that is, Chloe?
Um, really...
It's the Patriots players. There's a couple of Patriots players, yeah.
I believe you have to pay $20.
Right, so I think.
And...
You get your picture taken with them or something, is that right, guys?
And, yeah, I put it out on Facebook for people to put it on their calendar.
So what, what is the time for that? Is it right after school?
4:15.
Yeah, 4:15 to 4:15 to 6:15. Are they each an hour? Are they going to be together?
One's gonna be there for two hours and one's gonna be for one hour.
Nice. Do you know who they are?
Yeah, it's on Facebook.
Yeah, Freden Bolden and Doron Hammon.
Oh, that's really cool. I know a lot of the kids are excited about that. Great.
On the 25th, we're gonna have Unity Day in the high school, and I think the pre-order for shirts are already in, and we all wear a Georgetown Unite shirt. It's orange.
Orange, yeah.
And then the PSAT's here this Saturday. You have to be at the school by 7:30, and we're still trying to find a homecoming date, but...
No homecoming date secured. What is, what seems to be the holdup?
Um, well, we wanted after like a football game, and the dates we were supposed to have at the 20th, but that date didn't work. And the dates that we will know is the playoff schedule, and we'll know it weekly. And the first, like, game we'll know by is the 20th. So it's like a weekly basis kind of thing.
Okay. Are the kids excited for it? Are they getting...
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah. It's just frustrating that we don't have a date, but I hope that works out.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
It will.
So the PSATs are Saturday at the high school, 7:30.
For sophomores and juniors.
And, yeah, sophomores.
Great. Are you gonna be attending?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Attending, right?
Right. What, and tomorrow night, there is a home football game?
Yeah, I believe it starts at 7:00.
Okay.
Right, 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock.
Okay, good. We wish them the best. Hope they do well. They've been doing good so far. I'm proud of them. Proud of all the athletes. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? Okay, we're gonna start off talking with our assistant AD, Ryan Browner, and also athletic director, Guy Preston.
And Mike's coming too, because Mike's got the other half of Ryan.
Yep. Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Good to see you all.
We're excited to hear how things are going with the new position and, um, what the outlook is.
For my blog.
Huh? No, you, no.
You're taking a picture while I smile.
I'm taking a picture for my blog.
Yeah, sideways.
Sideways. There you go, that's a good sign.
No, Carol, Carol, this way. Oh, yeah.
You can see I'm really a great photographer. There we go.
Awesome.
Hopefully you'll be able to recognize who you are.
Blog.
Thank you. You're gonna be on the blog.
Yeah.
So I'm really excited to have Ryan and Guy and Mike here tonight. Um, you know, we, we started something new this year, and thank you for your support. At the end of the day, we, we think it's been a good solution to a challenge that we had last year. Um, you know, I think Guy, you know, did the college try last year, trying to juggle everything, and as we all know, it, it didn't really work the way we had hoped. But we are very appreciative.
But we are very appreciative.
Yes, we are very appreciative. So, um, we thought it would be good to give them the first, you know, month or so of school, because I think Ryan started in, at late August, right?
Yeah, mid to late August.
Yep, and, um, you know, just give them a sort of a month to just kind of settle in and figure out exactly how they sort of work together, and then have them come and just, uh, you know, share how it's going. Uh, we also did do a little athletic, um, action plan, um, you know, as a way to sort of address some of the questions and concerns that were brought up, and hopefully you'll, you'll see that we've tried hard to address, you know, all of them. Um, and it will be like a nice guidepost for us, you know, as the year goes on, to just keep checking back, yeah, just checking back to make sure that things are, you know, going as we hoped. And, you know, certainly there are some things in there that we are really gonna need some parent support for, like if we decide to figure out a way to do some kind of a school-wide, you know, event for athletics, you know, helping us think about the financial aspects of it, you know, ways that we might be able to put more money into our athletic revolving accounts, um, in ways that we can sort of depend on. Um, so there's a few things in there that, you know, obviously we're all gonna have to work together on, but we thought it was important to sort of put them down and, and just know that we all gotta tackle them at some point this year. So with that in mind, you know, they're here, so, you know, what do you want to say, boys?
How's he doing, Mike? I haven't seen him yet.
Working out good.
Well, I can, I can say for one that I am very pleased to see, uh, Ryan's, um, participation or his presence at the games. Um, we always love to see you there as well, but it's, it's great just to have, um, him there. The only thing that I, um, hear on the sidelines, and I appreciate you sending out the letter about the trainer, but that still is a concern for many, and I know that you're diligently looking for a trainer.
Yeah, it's a big concern of ours.
Yeah. Uh, but I feel confident that the people that are there, um, would be able to handle, you know, the situation.
Well, you've got the, you've got the EMTs, but certainly...
Not at every game, but not, not at...
Almost, uh, almost all home games, we've, we've provided an EMT or a trainer or the Georgetown Fire Department. Uh, it is difficult. Even this week, we, we sent out, uh, two weeks ago, a request for an athletic trainer through another company, and they, you know, filled our request. We find out yesterday that no one showed up, and they didn't, they didn't contact us, and we have no, we, we, we have no access to, to anybody else that day. And then we found out today at 3 o'clock that no, nobody was coming to today's game, so... It's, it's difficult, because we don't have, um, you know, we're not in with the company 100%, so... Uh, we are trying to infill it. It's, it's very difficult. There's a lot of different people. We have to work around schedules and stuff. Uh, but we have made it a priority to, to staff the games. It's not to the level that we were accustomed to the last few years with Christine. Uh, we'd like to get to that level, you know, because I'm concerned, and we all are concerned. Um, you know, if somebody gets hurt and we're not, we're not, we don't have the game covered. But as I said in that, um, that letter to the parents, um, you know, we are covered by the MIA rules. We are above and beyond. Uh, we, we are being extra cautious in, in trying to cover everything.
Sure.
So even when we don't have coverage, uh, either myself or Ryan are acting as an emergency responder. You know, we're not certified. We, we are certified in first aid and CPR and AED, um, training, but, um, you know, we don't have the other certifications, athletic training and things like that. So we, we do, you know, we are present there in case something does happen. And we do bring the AED to the field, um, if we don't have an EMT or a trainer, so... Uh, we are looking at as an update. I mean, we have been everywhere. We're on a lot of websites that, that are posting for us and advertising, and we just haven't had much luck. There was a couple people that we were talking to earlier in the process that, that couldn't do it time-wise, and that's one of the major factors.
Yeah, it is a strange time for people.
It's a 2:30 to 6 o'clock type thing. It's considered part-time because of the overall hours that, that would be needed. Um, and then you need an athletic, uh, training certificate, which is something you don't just go get. It's almost like a nursing, uh, thing you have to go to school for, for years to, to get that. So I don't know how many people, you know, have that certification and are not working. People that are working, it seems, uh, are working full-time.
They're looking for full-time.
So we're still looking at ways of trying to upgrade into that full-time situation. Um, financially, that's an issue that, that we're trying to overcome, and we'll do the best we can. You know, it's difficult every single day trying to secure that position, where, where if you just had it, we could just be bouncing the hours around and, and, and getting the kids the services they need, because they're not getting the rehabilitative services, they're not getting, um, the, the taping and the, you know, ice and, and things that they need, or just a quick checkup from a trainer if they get banged up.
Right.
To just check in, is this, you know, bad, or is this, you know, what, what is this? As opposed to now, we're really telling parents to take the children to the hospital or the doctor to have it checked out. And as you know, that's, that's not the best way to go about it, but...
Well, Michael and I are, are on the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, so, uh, after talking with Principal Lucia and also with, with the superintendent, we are going to try and see what we can do in terms of...
That's great.
Being able to secure some type of position. It's, it's just the ability, you know, we have the money, but it's the sustaining ability of funding that. So, you know, we'll try and do whatever we can, because we do agree that the ath, the athletes deserve it.
Right.
And the families deserve it, you know, they, 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 we know the importance of it, so thank you.
Well, I'll help appreciate it.
What is MIA, I'm sorry, what is MIA's rules for coverage?
The, uh, the coverage for MIA in the fall only is, uh, football. You need to have an EMT or ACT certified trainer or hire at home football games.
That's why we generally use the Fire Department.
With the way the soccer games are going. It's almost like a football game. It's like rugby.
Right. They, they recommend, they recommend a, a trainer or EMT for, for soccer, but it's not required. Required, it's, it's football, and then in the winter, it is, it is ice hockey and it's wrestling. Um, and I believe, I'm not sure about the...
Rugby.
You know, rugby is one, two, yeah. There's only, there's only, there's only a few sports where they make it mandatory. Now, soccer, soccer has a different mandatory rule. You have to have a game administrator as opposed to a trainer. And that, that rule, from what I understand, was put in for problems that they had at, at events, like inner-city games would get out of hand, and, uh, there'd be, there'd be fights and things like that at, at some soccer games, so they'd be required that you had a, yeah, you have to have a game administrator that just, you know, watches the game if something happens. They're the eyes and ears of the MIA to, to kind of tell what happens. You write a report, you know. So that, that, you know, it's not required. We would obviously be filling it, you know, like we have.
I was gonna say, there's no way that we could not, when people have mentioned that, I'm like, there is no way that we would not be up to the standards that we need to be, so...
Right, we certainly are, and we, uh, you know, we, we want to go above and beyond like we have. Uh, that's what we want to get back to. Uh, we have reached out to everybody in the league, and everybody's doing a little differently. Some have some in-house staff that, that are, uh, certified, and they teach some classes and, and they use them. Some, some are doing, uh, what we do, uh, on a day-to-day basis. Uh, a lot have hired out, like we're trying to do, is hire, hire somebody to work for us exclusively. Uh, and then others go through, uh, temp services or more, uh, permanent services for the seasons, and, and, and they get their, their overall coverage. So everybody's scrambling around, uh, trying to get it covered, so...
That's what they did before, right, and then they doubled our, the prices on this?
Yeah, so Christine went into nursing school last, uh, going into this year, and then they said, the company we were working with at the time, they said that's not their business model anymore.
They realized.
Yeah, they have to go more full...
The market forces...
Full-time employees.
Right.
So that's, they said they needed to, they would have to increase our hours that, that we used, and it would in fact double our, um, contribution.
Cost, right.
And at that point, we, we weren't prepared to, to do that. That was, that was literally leading right into the first couple of weeks of the season, so we would, we started the advertisement and, and see if we could do it a different way.
So what about maybe a staff member that might want to be certified as sort of an additional part-time job after school?
Yeah.
You know, that we would send to get training, and then they'd be the trainer.
As far as the train, athletic trainer, I don't think there's a, a quick certificate. It's, it's more, you have to go full-time and, uh, into a program, a, a college program, um, like a nursing school-type program. Uh, to be an EMT, uh, I don't, you might know a little bit more.
Still a cut-up program.
So, uh, e, so we, we do use, uh, two school employees that are EMTs, that we've been using them, um, you know, sporadically. I think that was some of the confusion early, that, you know, they were there, people just didn't know them. Like even the kids, they would see different people, and that's something that, you know, we lose too. So every day, there's a different person that's just, that's there for their safety. But I don't think the kids know who they are and...
Or that they have EMT.
Consistency would be great.
Parents wouldn't know either. You wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't...
They're not wearing a big EMT placard.
But if you see a guy with a big black bag...
Well, I was gonna say, they have a big black bag.
And a, and a defibrillator. He's not just watching the game. We've been paying that guy all season.
But that's why I, I had asked that you send that letter out, and it was, it's great that you did, so...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that. So how...
Want to hear from, uh, Ryan?
I'm Ryan.
Ryan, I'm so glad you're here, because now we all know...
Now you know the face.
The face, and we can say hi, and we, you know, appreciate you.
How are you guys?
Appreciate your presence. Great, very good.
So I'm Ryan. Um, things have been going well so far. One of the biggest things I thought was like communication-wise between Mike and Guy, but, you know, we've been communicating non-stop, and it's nice seeing them both each day. And, um, I think it's going pretty well right now.
Good. So when you arrive in the morning, you, what's your day look like?
I get here at 6:00. I start with, uh, Mike doing grounds, whatever, but what's nice about being, doing grounds, I know what games are going on throughout the day, so I can get the games prepped up until, usually I do game prep or whatever needs to be done around either school, till about lunch, 12-ish. And then I transition into the administrative role of doing games, and then...
Usually around 1 o'clock, we get, we, we get together. I've tried to transition from AP to AD at that point, and then we try to steal Cheryl down from her other job, and then we, then we start to do a lot of the athletic business there. And then, you know, basically by, you know, 2:30, all the buses are there, and we're, and we're running, making sure everything's on target, make sure the refs are there, all the fields are prepped. And, um, and then, you know, next thing you know, it's, it's 5 o'clock, and we're, you know, we're still trying to get the stuff done. So it's, you know, some real long, busy days for, for Ryan, for sure. He's young, though.
I love it.
It's to his benefit.
Energy is what's...
He brings, he brings the energy.
I was, uh, Essex Tech was, came over yesterday to pick up a field hockey net, and he goes, "What's your role? Like, what do you do?" And I told, I was telling him. He goes, "Wow, that makes plenty of sense," because they have, they kind of have a dual role, but one, they don't, they don't have, they're not utilizing both people, right? So I think this role, I'm getting utilized, getting the maximum of both.
And you've had a lot of experience with our fields. You've done four summers.
Well, he played on them.
I played on, I was on the West Street days, where I got to play on West Street every day for...
That was the mud pit. The difference between bad fields and good fields, and what makes a great field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I take pride in, that's one thing, taking pride in whatever you're working on.
Well, I'm sure it's exciting for you, as a graduate of Georgetown, to come back.
It's weird. I like it.
I'm sure, but also just the fact, like, I, I know that that's something that I, um, am happy that you want to come back, and that I'm sure that you can see huge improvements.
Oh, absolutely, well, technologically and whatever, all throughout.
Kind of amazing.
It's come, yeah, it's come a long way.
Oh, that's, that's great. But, so you did work summer...
I've worked summers for the past four ye, four years, I think, with, with Mike and...
Right. And on your resume, the thing that impressed me, and I'm hoping that you will look, uh, into this for Georgetown, is like a summer camp, like some type of...
That's kind of what I'm in the process right now.
It's a summer camp.
I just created a survey sheet that's, hopefully we can get out, that we'll see the interest, see the demand, and then go from there. I mean, it'd be great to have some extra cash flow and hopefully utilize it.
So you, you did that in Maine, right, Ryan?
Yeah, so I ran summer camps at a school up in Maine.
Basketball camp would be super...
Basketball.
I just sent my kids down to Providence, Rhode Island, and now, you know, maybe Boston, and, I mean...
Basketball, the num, I'd be scared about, then, I feel like the numbers would be, the demand would be up.
Yeah.
Our small gym, I don't know, but we could run multiple weeks and...
We'll fit them.
Well...
If they want it, if they want it, we'll find, we'll find a way.
I would have a cafe, and it's our first serve, you know?
Yeah.
We get rooms that I'm being utilized in the summer, classrooms.
But then again, you have to go back to, we're gonna need a trainer for nurse coverage or something for that.
Right.
Always ends up...
Yeah, I know. Yeah, but that's, um, I, I think it's, it's great. I'm glad that you are, um, acclimating well. I know prior to us hiring you, um, I, I took some time to look at other schools', um, athletic director roles and responsibilities, um, trying to understand a little more as to what guy, the pressure Guy was under, because he was not only an athletic director, but he was an assistant principal, which is huge.
Still am.
Yeah, you still are. Um, and I, I said to the superintendent, an athletic director position, the roles and responsibilities are...
Huge.
Huge. So, um, I'm glad that you're able to support Guy, because he definitely, uh, needed it. But you really, Guy, you know how proud I was of you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
You're always great.
There is none. He's, uh, he's still in the mentor, mentor phase of assistant AD. Uh, I give him a little rope, but not too far. He'd be messing it all up. No, he's doing great. It's, it's been a great addition. And he, as he said, I mean, me, me and Mike, me and Mike have brought along famously since we both come in the district, and we do communicate. We communicate every single day about, uh, you know, a myriad of issues, and we've never had any problems, you know, between us. We've always worked everything out, so I knew, you know, us being in charge of him, that we would be able to do it. And we do do it. We do, we do do it every day. We talk every day. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not gonna be a problem. It never will be a problem. Uh, we will work it all out, and we're gonna try to, you know, not kill him too in the process, so...
Well, like you said, he's young.
We give him some days off the rest of the...
So is that what it is? So the hours, so you have two days off during the week?
No.
No, no, no.
Oh. But if you come in at 6 o'clock and you're here, like tonight, I saw you at the soccer game, let me tell you, that's a lot more than 40 hours, I would think.
But it's, I don't...
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that, we're trying to balance that.
Don't say you don't mind.
No, we...
Don't let them know that.
We, we, we have, uh, we have given him some hours off, uh, like tomorrow, tomorrow, for example...
I'll go, I'll take, I usually take a longer lunch, uh, just to benefit.
So tomorrow, for, tomorrow, for example, we, we have the football game. We don't, we usually don't get out of here till ten-thirty, you know, sometimes even later.
We don't bring in early outside.
So, so you don't require him to come in at six o'clock tomorrow, you know? So get the morning off, and then you can then come in and help us through the rest of the day.
Okay, that's good. And do you also go over to Pembroke?
To do grounds, yeah, grounds at Pembroke, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Does anyone have any questions for Ryan about his new position? The, I just wanted to go over the action plan, because it is pretty extensive. Have you taken a look at it?
I wrote it.
But have you looked at it?
Yeah.
So.
Yes, of course. Can I just say this? I mean, it's, it's still kind of in the draft phase. It's, it's, you know, it's relatively new. I wouldn't, you know, say that every single word is, you know, hold us a hundred percent accountable. It's, it is, it is a thought process of, of what we.
Can we hold you accountable for anything on it?
Yeah, 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 most of it, yeah.
Are you gonna tell us which part?
No. So I would just say, it's, it's evolving, you know? So we, we just put a lot of thought into it as, as what we consider, you know, needs right now, and then how, how do we, you know, flesh it out? So we are gonna try to flesh them all out. It may not go the exact ways or timelines, but, you know, it's, it's a, these are concerns of us that we're, we're gonna work on, you know?
Right, and the, the, the big thing that I took out of this action plan is the change in, so looking deeper into the hiring of coaches, the whole process, the whole, you know, at the end of the season, how we, you know.
Evaluate them.
Yes. So I, I appreciate that, and I'd love to see how that, that goes. The hiring of the new basketball, varsity basketball coach, I think the, the process was great, but last year's was too. I, I enjoyed, thoroughly enjoyed being on that committee, and I think you did a great job.
Oh, we appreciate you having you there.
And, you know, keeping the committee, you know, on target throughout the whole, you know, it was, it was a lot of, it was a lot of time, not as much as last year. But I appreciate what you did, and I would love to see that that continue and go through all of the sports.
It's gonna be a more formal process like that. So that's, like, we do these things, and now it's just a matter of, we, we have to write, write it down and set the, you know, the process. That's what Carol was asking us to do here. So it, it's gonna take a little time to go through it and, and put it down. But it does, it does change sports, sports sometimes. It's, you know, football, obviously, is, is high publicity, publicity in this town. In certain other sports, I may not get a lot of applicants for positions. And I certainly don't wanna outflank applicants with the committee.
Sure.
You know, so it's, it's, it's a little different. And then it, the different phases, the varsity, junior varsity, freshman, middle school, you know? But I will have a process that we wanna put out there. You guys will, I think, approve it, right?
Well, I feel they'll, we'll make, we'll make sure they're aware of it.
We'll, we'll get to the process, and we can tweak it, and everybody comfortable with it, and that's what we'll, we'll have into our handbooks and stuff moving forward.
As you know, the athletic, the finances of the athletic revolving account are always concerning. You know, I am not in favor of putting any more monetary responsibility on the parents or guardians of our athletes. I know that it's difficult to maintain the sports that we do have without doing something, and that, of course, is the bottom of the list for me. So in terms of looking at fundraisers and things, so we're doing that, we're gonna look at.
Besides renting the fields as much as we can, we're working on the summer camps.
Yeah.
And, but we're also gonna be putting out a mass mailing to all the businesses. We've got a draft letter put together, asking them to buy banner space, and lining the turf field with banners that say, you know.
Just like American Legion?
Yeah.
And that's yearly? So they would have the banner, and then every year it would be a?
Yeah. And if they wanna renew it, it would be the same expense that followed it.
Okay, that's great.
The way, that's G, that's GAA?
GAA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an annual fee, and then the first year, there's a set up your sign fee.
Okay, to, to, to make the sign, like the graphics inside.
So it's not a, it's not kind of a bring your own, so you can kind of control quality and appearance.
Yeah, we want it to look nice, right.
Yeah, so we have all the same signs made at the same place. And we have plenty of fencing all around the turf, so, the more, the merrier.
Yeah. That would, that would be great. So who are you, are you gonna do like a mass mailing throughout, like a, like a certain geographical area?
I already got a mailing address from the town.
Great.
Of every business in town, and it's all on labels. We just have to finish up the letter and get it out there.
Yeah, that would look good. That's great, I'm happy to hear that. And I know that they're doing a road race, the Erie.
Yeah.
This week, a road race. I wish them the best with that.
Saturday.
It's gonna be beautiful weather to run. Is that something that you guys would possibly think of doing in the spring?
We are, we are looking at that, yeah. I don't know if we'll be able to pull it off for this spring, but we are gonna look into that. Looking at, like, the, all the local races and see if there's a good spot.
We're sort of hoping that we can get this parent piece, which we're still trying to figure out, 'cause if we could get a group of parents that represent the different sports, we're, we're willing to do the work, a lot of the work, but we need the parents to also work with us. So it can't, as you see, these guys are very, very busy doing their dual roles. That to run a road race, you know, really takes a tremendous amount of work. If it fell a hundred percent to our athletic department, that'd be really hard to pull off, and it really ambitious task. So we're thinking that if we can mobilize some, you know, a partnership with the parents, then, you know, more, more hands make lighter work, right? That kind of concept. So that, want that to be something we're, we're probing, like, how can we get that done? So I, I think I'd put my name down next to that, that I'm gonna work on that. So I'm thinking about that in conjunction with the guys.
Ryan's got time during lunch.
That's right.
You know, Carol, I think if you put it in your, your blogs, whatever, and set up one of those, those Google doodle things.
Doodle, yeah.
Whatever. I think you'd be surprised that you'll see parents signing up.
I think so too. I think so too.
And then you can assign, you know.
I think so too. So I, I think, you know, it, it just, I think we just wanna reinvigorate. I know every parent likes to sort of support their team that their child's on, but it would be really nice to, to have a, a group of people that come together to support the whole program, whether it's buying jackets, so we can get back to the point where every kid gets a jacket and the different pins, but it also could be for ways, people know, it's to financially support the, you know, the, the maintenance of our facilities, you know, our overall athletic program, so we can buy uniforms, so individual sports aren't fundraising for that. Those are the kind of things that we wanna talk about, like, people wanna know what you're gonna do with their money, right? So we need to make sure we, we're all in agreement. And that's this little committee that I'm talking about, maybe convening that includes these guys, to talk about the financial stability, and how are we gonna, what is our plan gonna be going forward? So these things will get talked about. Well, I have full confidence myself in the community, because we know that any time we ask for pretty much anything for the schools, the people come out in droves, and, and the staff come out to support it. So I, I think you would have no problem getting the, the people to, to get on board. So I wish you the, the best with that. I, I look forward to seeing more in terms of what we're doing. The rental of the turf field, how is that going?
It's been going good, man.
Okay, so we have interest?
The fall's busy with all of us, but we had a lot of rentals over the summer.
Okay, so that, that's good. And what, do you think that is something that they will consistently?
Yeah, because we actually had some rentals on a grass field as well.
Oh, good.
Because we got overflow, so we would suggest the grass fields, and people rented those as well.
So it's like, they didn't need the lights?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Good. Well, I wish you all the best with it. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Sky.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you wanna talk?
Do you need to ask me about the surplus a bit before I go?
Yeah, do you wanna do that before you go? Quickly, right?
So I put in a letter to request that the playground equipment behind the Pearly School, which is, the first grade was the seniors, seniors, I don't know.
Right.
Be donated to Park and Rec. They're interested in it for their new park, the dog park, or it's down behind that church on East Main Street.
That's great. And so we'll just figure out how to dismantle it, and then get it over?
My guys will lift it up out of the ground and bring it over there, and it, and it'll be their responsibility to.
That sounds easy. Yeah, they need to install, 'cause it really needs to be their liability.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's a great shade. We'll take it apart and deliver it.
Yeah. Normally, if a department gives up surplus, you would ask the other departments, and I asked, and they were interested, so.
How old is that equipment?
I really don't think it's that old. My guess is.
But I know when.
It's been there as long as I've been here, though.
Yeah, it's definitely more than ten, yeah.
Probably when they rehabbed Pearly in maybe the late nineties.
Nineties, maybe.
But it's still in nice shape.
Yeah, I was over there recently. Yeah, I know, that's, yeah, that's.
We don't, nobody really uses it, except for, maybe if somebody goes down. And it may serve better as either additional parking, or, Colleen was talking about putting a bocce court in.
That's a nice idea, actually.
The seniors don't use the.
We would be in. We would be in support of letting you have another purpose.
Yeah, so there's been no real plan, but it's just been talked about.
Okay. If you build it, they will come, right?
She's been really busy. I don't, you guys are, obviously don't know that, but it's, it's really picking up over there.
It's been picking up over there, absolutely. I'd love to see that. I, I, I'm happy when I go by Pearly, that I see the, the front circle.
Yeah.
Busy.
It is busy.
That's great. All right, I will make a motion to declare the playground structure behind the Pearly School as surplus. And you've already notified other towns, departments of its availability. So to declare it surplus and give it to Park and Rec. Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike, for coming. Heidi, come on up. So, I know I didn't, so what do we have to do to make Heidi's thing?
Just push the power button.
Okay. So come on up, everybody. Just feel free to grab a chair. Come on up. So Heidi, I think you have to, it says push the power button on the projector, he said.
Yeah, or you can load up, put whatever on the laptop first, and then turn the projector on.
Do we have a copy of this, or no?
I do not.
Okay.
She sent it to me.
I sent it to you, but, yeah. Thank you guys for coming out tonight. It's a long day for all of you.
Yes, it is.
So I appreciate it. We'll try and get you in.
And had to organize daycare and all kinds of things, so it wasn't easy.
Oh, I could've brought, I know. A couple of us are loving this, getting away.
Yeah, we, we, we love babies. You could've brought them, but that wouldn't have been very relaxing for you.
So is that what's going on there? So what, but you have your Mac, right? She has her Mac, so. We get it, Liz can help you hook it up. So do you wanna, do you guys wanna start talking while we work on the technology, or do you wanna wait? Doesn't matter to us. Did you email it to Peter?
Yeah.
Peter, do you have it on your, you, you have, you have Heidi's on your?
No, I wasn't able to get that.
I think it's because, I couldn't open it either, but.
It's on notebook.
It's on notebook. But I think the Mac, we have an adapter?
Or I can take it to what you people, and you can see it.
We might have to, that's okay.
Here it is.
It's not that.
I found, I.
Big anyways. No, that's, no, that's Margaret. Okay, that's Margaret's presentation.
Or you can just do the.
Wait a minute, hold on, Peter might be able to rescue us here.
Say something initiative at the Pembroke School, too.
Pembroke, yeah, no, Pembroke Handel. Margaret will tell you.
I better change that.
Pretty fancy. Okay, we're on now. Okay, there we go. So thank you, guys, for coming out and talking to us about Camp Invention. Last year, every time you come here to explain it to us and show us the pictures and everything, we just love hearing about it, because I, I hear it straight from the kids of how much fun they have. This year, you had the most kids, so I think that's gonna be a trend. I think every year, you're probably gonna see more and more kids.
Cause the maker space is now coming too.
So that's, well, that's great, I'm glad. So why don't you tell us how it went?
This is our third year. Our first year was thirty-six, with Julie DeBrosia actually brought it here. And second year was sixty-seven, and last year was a hundred kids. I don't know why it won't, do you know why? Last year was the most, yeah, it was a hundred children. As you can see, we only had five teachers before, four teachers before, four teachers and a director, and now Joe was hired this year, 'cause we needed assistant director, 'cause when you go up to a hundred, you need more people. So it takes a village, definitely. So that was our staffing this year.
Wow.
Yeah, it was a lot.
The high school kids had a great time.
The high school kids, I had forty-two applications. And, yeah, and, no. So I, I did that. The first couple of years, I let them all do it, and I just went, oh my God, we ended up babysitting everybody. But they, and they do such a fabulous job, but I limited this year, and it worked out much better.
So do you do like first come, first served?
Kind of, yes, because the go-getters are the ones that are gonna slip it in front of me, and they're the ones that are gonna get it. And unfortunately, that's what happened. This year, I went, I, I number them when they come in. The same thing like the Holiday Fair. I numbered the vendors, 'cause anybody who wants in, they get it by, you know, first comes. So, these are the four components we had this year, and each one of these ladies did it, along with, we had Caitlin, what's her married name? Yeah. She did one too, but she's at school tonight, so she couldn't be here. And we also had Melinda Patrick with us, and she ran the games for us. So each year, it's four components that you teach. I'll let them talk more about it, though. Christine?
I think I had launch.
Yep, you did. You launched the chickens.
Was it mission space, or was it launch? So, you know, strangely enough, I was like the last person to pick, 'cause I think nobody wanted the physics component, so that's what I did. So I had the blast. I, I had a blast. So we, we had to build a castle, and it was based around the different forms of energy, which is right in my curriculum anyway. So the kids got to build a castle that had to have a working drawbridge, and it had to have a flag, they could hoist a flag, and the castle just got out of control in the room. It almost consumed the whole room, I think, by the end of the first day. My second activity the next day was a, was a bottle, a pressurized water rocket. The kids absolutely loved that. I was so nervous to have them do it. I was so, had to make sure they were very supervised, taking that water bottle and pressurizing it. And then they got to one that science is kind of messy, you know, that, that sometimes when you think you've got everything in the right position, it just goes like that and doesn't go anywhere. So the kids had a blast with that. We made bubble guns, and we learned not only engineering design process stuff, but we also learned that sometimes when you put it together, you need to put it together again, even though you think you got it right together the first time. The kids enjoyed that. And then on the last day, they had two designed catapults that would launch some farm animals out of the way of the predator that was coming their way. So that was my five days of awesome fun. And I, I don't know who had more fun, me or them, I, I don't know. But the high school kids absolutely were just like, this is like being a kid again. So it was a fantastic time. And the kids just wanted to continue to do the same things over and over again, which I think is a testament to what their whole curriculum is all about, is they wanna make it better each time they come in. And that was always a good thing, so.
So Christine, can you just remind me and the public that's watching, what is?
So Christine, can you just remind me and the public that's watching, what is the age for the camp?
Um, it is, I believe it's one through six.
No, they, they upped it. They did K this year. They invited the babies, yeah.
Yeah. And the kids, and the kids, even, even the kindergarten kids had such fantastic ideas. Um, and they needed a little help, as we all do, a little help from time to time. Um, but the, the excitement that they brought every day was great.
They were exhausted by the time Friday came. That's what we found. The big difference. There, yeah. Day, day four is um a lot to pick them up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a long day for them. Yeah. And then Lizzie?
Do you want me to go to duct tape? Uh, duct tape billionaire. Um, so they sent us about a thousand rolls of duct tape, um, like every design you could ever imagine. Um, and over the course of the week, the kids had to plan out and then create an invention made out of duct tape. Um, and each day in order to earn money.
The superintendent would like a dress.
Right? There were outfits, there were full outfits. Um, over the course of the week, in order to earn more money to buy, you know, interesting items to make their inventions. They had to um compete in, just like friendly competitions in little teamwork challenges. So the kids started every day, um regardless of their age, they were working in groups together. To create something or build something. So um there were a lot of experiments and um design related tasks, but also a ton of teamwork. And cooperation in that class as well. Um, so they were earning money and we talked a lot about like, um, like how inventors, you know, start by marketing their ideas and. Like the whole design process and then the creation process, the marketing process, um, which was really interesting for them. Um, they could go to the recycle room and. Get materials when they needed it. So we had recyclables everywhere.
Every day.
Every day. Um, like I said, they got to buy special materials too, so um some of their items were very fancy. Um, and then they marketed. The little kids were drawing pictures of their inventions. The older kids, you know, were, were writing out full descriptions and trying to sell to each other and trying to like secretly trade money, even though I said, we're not actually buying each other's inventions.
Can you tell us what, like, give us an example of what they made?
They made pretty much everything. Some of the little kids like really liked making dollhouses and like, I, I don't know, I'm noticing this with my own toddler. They love like having somewhere to put their stuff. Um, so when we had the kindergarten and first graders, they had, yeah, a lot of like little items. Um, the kids, they made all kinds of um. Wallets, accessories that they could use like to wear with them, hats that did all kinds of new things. They came up with such fun ideas. Um, and like Chris was saying, like, the, the different age ranges, you just saw like. Such different ideas and like so much energy and each one, you know, definitely had its strengths and pros. Um, and the whole day was, was just really fun. Yep, they earned their first uh million at the end of the week. So they got this like certificate and they were, the little kids especially, even though sixth graders were like, I'm a millionaire. Running around and then we set up um a nice like show for the parents to come in the last day. So they all had their inventions laid out and. They had made multiple, some of them. So the parents got to come in and see everything that they made and the excitement too. Yeah, it's a lot of fun and a lot of duct tape.
I did Operation Keep Out. Uh, the premise behind that was the Take Apart Room. Um, so they spent the first couple of days in the Take Apart Room. Where they took apart all of the things that they brought to Camp Invention or we had donated. Um, so they learned safety. Um, and also just little things on how to use a screwdriver. Um, and then they took pieces of the components, um, of the electronics that they took apart. To ultimately incorporate into their alarm boxes. Um, so once we got back into the classroom, they learned basic circuitry, how electricity flows through a circuit, open circuits, closed circuits. Um, and ultimately, um, they built an alarm box, the older kids did, that when you opened the box, it sensed the light and the alarm went off. So they could put their secret things in there and then when they opened, someone opened the box to break into their alarm box and alarm would sound. Um, and then a lot of them um incorporated the fans that they took out of the computer towers, um, and asked for different batteries and different wires and got the fans running again and. Built them right into their alarm boxes. The little ones utilized um buttons. So you had to press the button to get the alarm to sound, so it was a little different. Um, than the older ones, but again, they had an absolute blast doing it.
That's what Camp Invention does too. It, it caters, like when they um got the curriculum, they have the fun part. We, I learned that I don't like to be a principal, so I'm moderate, but um, yeah, we gotta take care of that end of it, but they have such the fun part. And when they took the pieces out, like we give them all this stuff, it's unreal how, um, all of a sudden I said to them this year, oh, look at the curriculum now. Now they geared it towards the preschool is coming into kindergarten. Like they, they had a little difference in the, in each component of how they were gonna do it. So it was interesting to see um. How, how they did that, how, yeah, they, um, Camp Invention actually worked that. Every year it's a different curriculum too, because some of the kids say, oh, I already did that last year, so I'm not gonna come to Camp Invention this year. And I'm like, oh, go online, because every year it's a different curriculum. Right. And um this year it's actually um futures, like here's the picture of what she was doing and um Christine was doing. That was the picture of the big castle. With the drawbridge and everything.
Drawbridge. The boys had their own castle, the girls had their own castle. And we had one large castle and no drawbridge. Don't know how many's getting in there.
Did you have a little fair?
Uh, it was a pretend mo. Well, they, they wanted to take the drawbridge that I had in the doorway, cause I built a drawbridge there. I'm like, no, 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 build your own. But yeah, they, they just loved it. And when it, when it would come in and it would be collapsed, they would immediately grab the duct tape and start rebuilding again. So uh, it was a lot of fun.
And that's the thing with it.
Did they buy the duct tape from?
They all get duct tape.
I have my own secret stash.
That's just a lot.
But they all have to work as a team. That's the whole premise behind Camp Invention is too, that it's just not your idea. It, you have to work as a team and that's the hard part for them. Um, that's the big thing coming into Camp Invention. They really send out to the parents first, the initial of, this is what it's about. And also that, um, they don't tolerate any kind of behaviors and the parents have to sign it and tell their kids that. And when they come in, they know that, okay. There's no tolerance for that. You could work together, uh, you know, you come see Mrs. Beegan and you don't wanna do that. But um, this was, I know, we hardly ever did. We had one episode and it's great when it only won out of a hundred. I'm like. Woo-hoo! We got that, that's rocking. So um, and you're always, you're always gonna have something anyways. But um, and this was Jill's first year, so. You tell us.
Tell us about what? You've covered it all.
No, you did the newsletters, like each day we have to send out.
Each day there's a newsletter. Um, at lunchtime, the group is so big that half the group is playing games while the other half is um eating lunch and then we switch it over and. It's great even just to see the little competition and like how to keep, you know, let's keep this as your camp, you need to keep it clean, we're gonna have a competition. They. Always wanna earn the tally mark for having the cleanest table or things like that. The little um.
Yeah, we had base camp.
Uh, at base camp, yeah. And then they would get camper of the day. They'd be supportive of each other of who was camper of the day. They'd, oh, I knew you were gonna get that because you helped me with that.
And that was like precious when we heard that, like, I knew you were gonna get it and we were like, oh.
CITs. Also, we had CITs of the week and all those things and they looked forward to all that fun stuff.
Yeah. I think we have a couple other pitches. That's about it.
So Heidi, let me just ask you.
That's one of our rocket launchers.
On like a go-forward basis, will you always, will you take everybody that is interested and then just get the additional staff members that you need or will you?
It, they cap it, well, they, they cap it to a hundred and sixty-six. Um, that's way too much. That's out of control. But um, yeah, I kinda, I kinda said to them, please don't. Can, can we get it lower than that? But they don't. It all depends. It's like, um, they do have a cap, it's a hundred and sixty-six. Yes, I have to go buy the staffing, like, and that's what I did. That's why the high school is, I just send it out to them and they have to fill it out and they send it back in and that's why I do the numbers. Because then, based on how many we get. That's how many I take. And then, then it all, like a hundred, so we're allowed five teachers and an assistant director. Um, you know, in the past, we didn't, sixty-seven, four teachers and a director. Um, thirty-six, it was just the three of us. Yeah, there was just the three of us doing the whole thing.
Can I meet at the cost?
Um, well, it's around between two fifty-six and two seventy-five. All depends because. Once you get more staffing, the money goes up to pay the staff.
That's what happens, right.
And that's, and this year we had a nurse. So, um, and we had to work out that, but next year, all of it's on. It will be funded through Camp Invention. So that's where, sometimes it's one fifty-six, sometimes it's, I mean, two fifty-six up to two seventy-five, but it all depends too, like. There's a lot of ways, like when we start sending out the discount flyers in January, that's what it is, the discount flyers. If the parents are aware of that, like, that's why you send them out. It says. You know, sign up by, before this time, it's forty-five dollars off. Sign up by this time, it's thirty-five. Sign up by the twenty-five. And then we're allowed so many, like. If um we know a child wants to come and they're having a difficulty paying wise, I get, I get one. You know, we get a couple. Yep, and we also have like the teachers, the teachers, if their children wanna come, they get a discount because their children come. So they do a lot of those kinda things.
We can cap it if we want though, right?
No, we can't. It's, we go by their guidelines. Everything is their guidelines. Yes.
I mean, our school can certainly hold that, that number during, but it would be.
Bobby, you're coming into a hundred. That was a lot. It's a lot of, um.
You're doing great.
It's a lot of chaos, but it's a lot of organized chaos. It's a lot of, yeah, a lot of prep work. Like to get these, these guys are wonderful doing it, like teaching. I'm like poofed by the end of school and we always have to do it the week after and I'm just like, I cannot teach. I give them all the credit in the world. They, they go out and they teach. All I have to do is the discipline part. I just walk around and. Okay, come here, come here, come with me, come sit with me, I'll calm you down.
Is it, is that when it always is? It has to be that the week after?
It's usually the week after, because then we have our camps at Pembroke too. So we have that window of that week window, so that's what works for us. So that's why we do it.
And you do not only do the discipline part?
Yes, exactly. Alright, so they walk in, well, I unpack the boxes, about a hundred boxes and it's like, I put it in their rooms for them, so all they have to do, but they're teaching, that's why I do it. So that all they have to do is come in, open it up, everything's ready for them. I'm like, just go, just go. So it works, it works, it works. And I'm just doing a little plug. Had to do the little plug. Um, yeah, the holiday fair, which.
These holiday fairs seem to get earlier and earlier.
Well, it's always the first weekend in November. That is it. We get the first weekend. I know, I know. It's always, and the teachers are already signing up for everything. We have, we have um the signup genius and the teachers just go to town. It's great. I just ask for help and they all do it and they all come and it's so much fun.
What is the attic that you're trying to get donations for, maybe?
Oh, the granny attic. Oh, if you, if you clean out your houses, you guys can do that too. Clean out your houses and bring in the um, the junk you wanna get rid of. We do granny's attic. So they're bringing it in on Friday, November third at.
So granny's attic, they come, it's, so you donate?
Yep. So Bobby, clean, clean, clean your uh, clean your house. Yeah, it's sale.
Are you having?
It's an indoor yard sale.
You don't need anymore or something?
I'm gonna need a truck.
They have all kinds. You had all kinds of things.
Yeah, we did. We had all kinds of things.
So where does the money go for grannies? That's.
No, everything. The whole fair, it just goes, it goes to schools.
Okay.
We give it back to the schools and say, yeah.
You raise for the fair?
Yeah, and it's nice, this year the PTA is taking back the cookie walk. So it's great. So um she's getting up the cookie walk. Um, for the PTA and that's great. The cookie walk, um, that you make a million cookies, you put them on the table, um, people come, they buy thirteen in a box, they get a box and they get the cookies. But people donate the cookies, like people make them, parents make them. So the PTA gets all the parents involved. The first year, um, it made almost a thousand dollars by itself. So that's a big deal. Like, that's a big thing to have. So I'm glad they're taking it back and they're doing it. So it's very nice. But we have Santa and we have over fifty vendors and we have face painting and.
Does somebody still make the popcorn? Cause I was.
No, no more popcorn. Um, shh, don't say that word around Georgetown. No, the popcorn.
I burned it. I kept burning.
Don't say that to Eric.
I did. I kept, Heidi, you burned it again.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The first couple of years we had that and it was all over the school and that was it. Yeah, um, no more.
No more.
No more.
But it used to smell so good, Heidi.
It did.
You'd walk in, the whole place.
We had free popcorn when they came in. People would get free popcorn. It was really cool. So.
So November fourth.
November fourth, nine to two. Oh, and we're asking everybody to bring a canned good when they come. The vendors instead, they don't give me um donations for the raffle table. What we do is we do raffle baskets for every grade level. That's how we do our raffles, so that the kids are involved and we um make the baskets that way. Um, what I have is the vendors, they bring in canned goods instead. So we have canned good. Buckets around the building and they donate so we can bring it to the different food pantries around the school. And I also have high school volunteers. They come in and they work that too.
Yeah, I have seen that morning announcements, yeah.
Yes, so.
That's great. I love that, how you incorporate just the whole, you know.
Yeah. I love it that a small town, a small town, yes, and we have a small town and we do something like this and that's what I love. And I love that all the teachers are involved. I love that. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we love it too. The team effort, it's great. You know, we recognize that, you know, it's um, teaching is not an easy thing. Believe me, I, I know that having three kids of my own, I don't know how. You guys do it and I really have the utmost respect for teachers, educational professionals, just in general. I think that you guys do a great job and you too. But to see you go beyond the regular school day, to me is, is most impressive. You know, even coming out to, to meetings like this. You know, just to have you come out, it just really shows, I think, the public, it shows us, it shows our, our students, that you really do take a, a huge, uh, you know, you. Love what you do and it means a lot.
Well, that's what makes it so easy, is that we do love what we do. So we're lucky.
And we do appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for having us.
Next year it's gonna be a hundred and sixty-six.
We should just push the button to turn it off though, right?
Yeah, we'll actually, we'll need it for Tina.
Actually, we'll need it for Tina. Just stay in the corner, Michael. We're gonna have Tina. Yes. Okay, so if we could have um Tina Los.
Thank you for being so patient. I know we're a little behind.
No, no, not at all.
Um, can we set up the other laptop?
So Julia had a daycare challenge tonight, so she really apologized for not being able to be here. But Peter and Julia. Met with me and so he can answer any questions that Tina and I can't. Okay, Peter, can you come on up too? Oh, and Margaret could come up too, because Margaret's gonna. We met with Margaret as well. Peter, thank you for coming back. Ms. Beegan just asked me to ask if you needed to approve Camp Invention tonight for next year or when you would like.
That to have that, what we do is it, is it the same program? Basically, it's the same.
Right, and I think that she had the slide June twenty eighteen, so I think she might have wanted to ask if.
I think in the past you have approved doing it, but you know, I don't know that it's required.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, let's take a vote anyways, just so.
Just in case to show a support if anything else.
Sure. Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve Camp Invention uh to be held at the Pembroke School um in June twenty eighteen. That's presented. So, second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so thank you all for having me here tonight. Uh, my name is Tina Los. I'm from the Essex County Asset Builder Network, which is made up of six communities that. Um, received a grant this, um, past July and so we're just launching off the ground. And so, um, basically the overview of what I'm gonna talk about is um a positive youth development model about how we can help support the youth in our community. And then more specifically a framework called the forty developmental assets that we use to implement that positive youth development model. Um, and so one of the components that we're gonna be talking about today is a survey that I'm going to be asking you. To approve to um run through six, for six through twelfth graders for this upcoming um school year and I'll talk about the bigger, um, more details and how that kinda fits into the bigger picture, but that's kind of. What we're covering um in this presentation. Um, so this is a private grant from the Tower Foundation. It's a three-year grant and we're really lucky to have received it. Um, this has become a really hot grant. Um, a lot of communities and coalitions are going after this, so um we kind of hit it at the right time and are on the forefront of this work. So the towns involved are Amesbury, yourselves at Georgetown, Newberry Rally. And Salisbury, making up the Triton School District, and then Newbury Port. Um, and the goal of the grant is to spread the philosophy and practice of the positive youth development approach through the implementation of the forty developmental asset framework, which I just mentioned. Um, and this is throughout the communities across the region. So my role um is the regional project coordinator, so I am working with all communities equally. And making sure that everybody is trained on the positive youth development approach and knows what it means. And my goal is to help you as a community build um collaborations and stakeholders and investment in the positive youth development model. so that you can begin to sustain it on your own, and learn the language, and learn how it works. Um, and one of the things, just sitting here, listening, it was actually a pleasure to hear all of the things that you guys have going on, and what you're passionate about, and it's really clear that you, as a whole, do care about the youth in this community, um, that comes across really easily, and it's great that you have a youth on the school committee, um, and, you know, the Project Invention sounds great, I don't know if anybody's here anymore, but that, you know, just the excitement, and how, like, so the, the positive youth development approach, you guys are already doing it, like, through Camp Invention, having high schoolers work with middle schoolers, giving children the opportunity to just explore in a safe environment, and build up self-esteem, and confidence, and, um, value, and interest in school, and learning, and so all those things are part of this Forty Developmental Asset Approach. So it's not that I'm coming in and asking you guys to put something else on your plate, or asking the schools to do something else, it's really giving you guys a vocabulary to talk about what you're already doing, and how we can work as a community to support our youth. Um, so I'm just gonna give you a, a brief overview of the difference between a positive development approach versus something that we've, um, talked about as traditional prevention, so when I mention prevention, that could be anything from substance use, violence and bullying, sexual behavior, um, anything, anything along the risk behavior continuum. And so traditionally, um, youth are seen as having problems that we need to fix as adults, so we say that, you know, Johnny's out, you know, acting out in school, that's a problem, how do we fix that problem? Whereas in a positive prevention approach, you're saying youth is resources, so instead of telling Johnny what he did wrong, and reprimanding him for it, it might be more of a conversation of, you know, Johnny, what are you feeling, how, like, you helped me tell you how I can help you, and not ask, like, telling answers, but asking the youth for answers. Um, traditionally, also, prevention has had a reactive approach, so if a tragedy happens in a community, um, you know, everybody kind of rises together and says, we have to do something about this, whereas a positive developmental approach says, all youth, um, something could happen at any time, and we need to get ahead of that, and put some, um, structures in place to help support youth, so that we can prevent those types of tragedies from happening. Um, similar to that is that, in traditional prevention, you'll see that it's, um, focusing on specific youth that might be at risk. So you think of maybe, a certain demographic, maybe, um, low socio-economic status, or having one-parent family home, or not having, um, access to transportation, or homelessness, um, those things can all put youth at risk, but with a positive development approach, you're talking about youth that are all at risk, all youth have the, um, could be in a situation where they make a negative choice, or, um, engage in some risk, kind of risky behavior, and thinking that there's no one specific pathway to get there, um, really allows you to be able to support all youth equally, and to hopefully raise the whole group up as a whole. Um, two other points quickly that I want to make, so in traditional prevention, a lot of, um, the work was considered like direct service, so counseling, working with healthcare professionals, whereas the positive prevention approach, we're really looking at an environment approach, and that kind of goes into the next bullet as well, so traditionally, you'll see on the schools, it's, what are you doing to support the youth? You know, you see them every day, it's the teacher's responsibility, you know, what are you guys doing? Versus, in a positive prevention approach, you're looking at a full community, so you're saying, who are these other players? What about police, businesses, um, the religious community, volunteer organizations, youth-serving organizations? Everybody plays a part in the youth's growing up and raising, and how can we engage everybody, so that when, if a youth falters, that they're not falling off the edge, but that there's supports that can catch them. Um, does anybody have any questions about that, before I go on? So, um, there's many different ways that you can implement a positive youth development approach, and the one we use is the Forty Developmental Assets. So this is not the only one, this is just one way to look at it, and one language that can help, help you implement that model. And so within the Forty Developmental Assets, there's external assets and internal assets. So the external assets talk about what I mentioned about that environment, so how do we support youth, how do we empower them? How do we help them learn that they have a voice in the community? How do we create a structure that they can grow and thrive, but also be safe? Whereas the internal assets focus on what the youth feel inside, so helping build that positive sense of identity, that self-esteem, the self-worth, knowing how to create those interpersonal relationships, and knowing that they can get supports from outside, in that outside environment. Um, so a lot of research has been done on the Forty Developmental Assets, they were created by the Search Institute, and been studied for about twenty or twenty-five years, um, and they're used nationally, and tested with many different groups of students, and across the board, what they've found is that there's a positive correlation between the number of assets a youth have, and, um, they're thriving in school. So, um, what you'll see across the bottom here, from left to right, is the number of assets, so it's forty developmental assets, so zero to forty, um, is the number that youth can have, and in those different categories, the more youth, or the more assets youth have, the higher that their GPA level is. So GPA, leadership skills, involvement in school are all thriving indicators that are measured in this framework. They also find that the opposite is true, so there's an inverse correlation between the number of assets and the risk behaviors. So again, looking at assets going up across, um, the bottom, from left to right, you'll see that the more assets a youth have, the less likely they are to engage in risk behaviors, versus those who maybe only have zero to ten assets, they're more likely to engage in the risk behaviors. Um, so getting a little bit more detail into the actual ask of why I'm here tonight, so, to start off this grant, we're looking to collect baseline data from all of the communities participating, um, so we're gonna be doing a youth survey this year, which is the Attitudes and Behavior Survey. The survey is electronic, um, some of the questions include demographics, so basic, gender, um, race, and age, and then, the beginning part of the survey goes into some asset questions, so for each of those forty assets, there's three questions on the survey that help measure whether that youth has the asset or not. And then, the second half of the survey talks about some of the risk behaviors, so if you're familiar with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it's a shortened, modified version of that, so it asks about past thirty-day use, perception of harm, parental disapproval, and peer disapproval for alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, and other drugs. Um, the survey is completely anonymous and confidential, so we are not asking students to, at any time, will they be asked their name, um, like, what teacher they're from, where they live, anything that could possibly be identifying. Um, and then I think the biggest thing here is that there's multiple opt, opt, excuse me, opt-out options. Can I say that ten times? So the first, um, can, uh, opt-out option is a parent consent that will be sent out to parents, notifying them that the survey is taking place, and it's a passive consent, so if parents don't want their youth to participate, they fill out the survey, and hand it back to the school, and the youth will be able to just do another peaceful, quiet activity during that time. The second opt-out option is the youth themselves, so there'll be a script that, um, the people who are administering the survey will read to the students, and it will say, you know, if anything makes you uncomfortable, you don't have to participate, if you don't want to, you can stop at any time. Um, even if the youth decide to start the survey, and they get, like, halfway through, and they say, nope, this isn't for me, I'm not, and I don't feel comfortable doing this anymore, they can just stop with no penalty. Um, and so the survey company, when they see all those results, they clean the data to make sure that it's representative of students who have taken this, this, if they decide to take the survey, have taken the survey seriously, and, and done some thoughtful responses.
And then individual questions?
Oh, yeah, also, yeah, so you can go through the survey and skip, um, so you can answer three questions, skip the next one, and then keep going, so it, there's no, you must answer every question, go to the next page, or anything like that, so the entire survey is optional the whole way through.
So, so if a student does, like, the first ten questions, say, will that information be calculated in the overall results, or?
Um, I'm not sure what percentage of this, the survey has to be complete for it to be counted, um, but I can look at inside, if you're interested in that answer.
Let's take a theory, please, skip question eleven and go on to twelve.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah, mhm. Um, and they'll analyze whatever data they have, based on which questions were answered. Um, so a timeline overview for survey rollout, um, we're looking to send out the parent notice by the end of October. Um, I've been working with Carol and some of the other administration on setting up, um, a time that I can come for conferences, so I'll do a presentation to parents, and then talk, um, give an opportunity to have surveys out that they can see, and take a look at, and ask me any questions that they might have. We're also looking to set up a parent night for the sixth graders, so that they can come hear a similar presentation to this, and understand a little bit about, more about why we might be asking sixth graders some of these questions, and then, um, give them, again, a chance to look at the survey. We're also gonna have copies of the survey in the school offices, so that parents can come in and look at it, if they, um, want to, or have questions. Um, and then, we're looking to roll out the survey toward the end of November. Um, the survey turnaround is fairly quick, because it's all electronic, so the company will analyze all the data, and send you back a school report, um, it's really comprehensive, it has a lot of the nice charts, two of which I had shown earlier in the presentation, and it gives a write-up of how many assets overall, some areas that your school has, and your community has done really well, and some areas to grow. Um, and so you'll have that entire packet and the data for your own personal use, so you can use that in any other aspect of the community, or do any further, um, analysis that you want, we're also gonna get the entire, um, aggregate data set as well, so we can do further analysis. Um, and then, the fun part about this is that we're gonna have the youth, um, look at the data, and then present it back to the community, and so it'll be there, them, um, since this is positive youth development, will help them build the skills to be able to read data, and put together a presentation, and then give that back. And it's, it becomes much more meaningful, it's not an adult just saying, like, kids think this, again, right? It's not us coming up with solution for them, it's them looking at their own data, and making, um, connecting it with context that they live in, and then they can say, oh, I see this, and I, you know, I have some anecdotal things that I see in here, and this is how it all makes sense, and they can tell a really nice story, and put that all together. Um, so big picture, just to give you an overview, like I mentioned, this is a three-year grant, um, so this year, we're going to be doing the Youth, um, Attitudes and Behavior Survey. Next year, we're going to be looking to do the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, that's more, um, risk behavior focused. In between year and two, we're also looking to do a community assessment, so we're not just looking at what you think, we're also looking to get a bigger picture of what resources already exist in the community, what areas might be, the Georgetown community might be interested in growing, and where we think we're doing really well already. Um, and we're gonna be collecting, um, existing data, looking at police Narcan and overdose, and try and really get a comprehensive picture of what, what the town of Georgetown looks like. Then we'll be gathering stakeholders together from the community to look at your own data, so then you can, too, do that quantitative and qualitative look, and kind of create a picture of what you are seeing, and create a strategic plan about some areas that you feel like, you know, the data indicated, you know, that we're really strong in this area, and we want to help to grow that program, and then maybe there's some, um, areas that you say, you know, this is really an opportunity here, um, I think I want to expand and grow this piece, and so we'll kind of look into that, and then hopefully by year three, we'll be able to start some implement, implementation. Um, and then just some general, um, links that I think are really good to look into for more information, so like I mentioned, the Search Institute is the organization that runs this survey, um, their website is really comprehensive, and shows a lot of the research that they've done on the Forty Developmental Assets. Um, the link to the Attitudes and Behavior Survey is just more specific about the survey itself, and the rollout process. And then the last website, um, it's not related to me, or any of the communities that we're working in, but I found it really helpful. Um, I think they're out of New York, um, and the website lists all the Forty Developmental Assets, it's interactive, so you can click one, it'll describe what the asset is, describe, like, what it looks like in the community, and then it'll give you an example of, um, an experience where they tried to purposely and intentionally build that asset, and so it can give you a really clear example of, you know, if you wanted to build, um, like, a positive adult role model, it'll say, this is what this might look like, it's not just parents, it's other coaches, or mentors, or teachers, and here's some techniques that other people have used to try and specifically build that asset. Um, so it's kind of a cool website to check out. So, um, does anybody have any questions I can answer? Sorry, that was a lot.
That was very, that was great, that was exciting, you know, thank you so much, I've, we've spoken quite a bit about this before, and I'm very excited, I'm excited for the whole town, um, and, you know, we have the Substance Abuse Advisory Panel, uh, which is kind of set up to look, to do what you're talking about, is to, to look at the community, and, and talk about, um, protective factors, and risk factors, and, you know, try to build that on a multi-generational level. Uh, but this, your, your timing, you're coming in, in, uh, at this, this year with this survey, is really, in my opinion, the way I see, I mean, quite ideal, because actually, we were going to conduct this survey in any case this year. Um, we have conducted it before, so you know we have kind of a baseline, we conducted it in twenty fourteen. Um, we would love to have conducted it, like, more often, or more grades, or something, but it, it does cost money, so we appreciate the fact that you're going to be handling that for us. But, you know, so we also have teachers and faculty that are rather familiar with the Forty Developmental Assets, and, and how to make those, you know, bring those to life, and, um, you know, the, there's so many assets here, but, you know, just, it, it fits in with a lot of our initiatives, that, that focus on building strong relationships, um, having mentors, and, uh, with, with the students, and encouraging them, and have, setting high expectations, um, that, there's just, there's a lot that it, it fits in with what we're already doing, but in a sense, we really, we have already been doing this, this program, just not, you know, as completely in-depth as we would, we'd like to be able to, so, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Um, I would just like to hear from, um, the principals, in terms of the, um, the survey itself, I know, uh, I took some time looking at them, and as a parent, I have some problems with it. So I know I have to be school committee member right now, but I would love to hear your perspective on the questions that we're asking, the age that we're asking these questions, and how the parents are going to feel that we are the ones asking those questions.
Well, I, I, I will jump right in, because at the meeting, you know, I think Tina and Carol and Elizabeth, I was like, not my baby sixth graders, no, we cannot.
Yeah.
I, I did have a momentary.
She was fine with the first half of the survey.
Yeah, I was like freaked out. Yeah, the first half, when we're looking at assets, and, because in a few minutes, when we're talking about PBIS, it fits completely with what we're doing, and having that positive, but getting to those risk behaviors, I was, it was like, yikes, you know, it's like, I just don't feel very comfortable, but then, Tina said that we can choose which questions to take out, and so, okay, so we can go through, so the questions that are talking about, um, risky sexual behavior, we're gonna take them right out. And so, and when we're looking at some of the other questions, I'm okay if we, if we provide support and scaffold the survey, um, because in the fifth and sixth grade, even though we're not talking specifically about drugs and alcohol, but we are preparing children to make the right choices, and I think that, um, that I'd be, knowing that we can take out some of the questions, I was okay leaving in some of the other risky, because the sad truth is that, you know, as Tina had said, we want a baseline, and when children get into middle school, there is the potential that children are going to be using those substances, and I think we want to see, where is that breakdown? Does it happen between sixth and seventh, or is it later on? And I, so I'm okay with getting that baseline.
Tina, can you just say to the committee what you told us about why sixth grade? Because we were saying, why wouldn't we just start it at seven? Because if you recall, some of you who are on the committee, back when we did it, as Pam said, there, it was a, I'd say, a, a poor rollout of it, right? We didn't anticipate all the things that really might have been concerning to parents, and there wasn't enough upfront discussion, people really didn't get to see the survey, there was a lot of things we could have done better. But we ended up not giving it in seventh grade, because it, it just, you know, kind of went down that road, and there was just no recovery from it. So, we don't want to make that same mistake again, but could you talk about why sixth grade? Because we, we've kind of been pushing back a little on her with sixth grade, so.
Yeah, so like I mentioned, we have a really great opportunity here to get an overview picture, um, broadly, of the entire region, and what we've found, when you survey grades six through twelve, is that there's certain years that you'll find that there's a big jump in use. So use might go from zero percent to ten percent, and then quadruple to, like, forty percent in the next year. Um, and so, in order to be able to identify where those gaps happen, we need to have a picture of, before it starts. So if we just survey, say, the high school, there's already, I'm sorry if, you know, earmuffs if you need them, but there's already kids who are experimenting, um, with some, some of these risky behaviors when they get to high school. So then we say, "Okay, if they're already happening in high school, are they happening in eighth grade?" And what we find is they're less in eighth grade, but they're starting to experiment in eighth grade. So you say, "Okay, let's take a step back, let's look at seventh." And unfortunately, in some districts, there are youths in seventh grade. So that's why we have to bring it to sixth. And what we've found pretty much across the board in all the communities I've worked in previously is that sixth grade, the use is not there. It's really, really low. We're seeing really little numbers, like less than 1% on some of these risk behaviors. And so that's good, that's what we want to see. So we say, "Okay, sixth grade is great. The youth are still being protected and they're making good decisions. How can we help whatever is being fostered in that sixth grade? How can we carry that further and further and push back as much as we can to help them make good decisions for longer? So if we don't know where it's starting or where that kind of jump happens, we don't know where to intervene." Another thing, two things I just wanted to mention quick and then I'll let you take over as well. The CDC has done a lot of research on surveying students for risk behaviors. And they've found no correlation between asking students about risk behaviors and for youth going ahead and trying out. So if they're asking about glue and sniffing and they've never heard of that before, there is no evidence to support that they will then try glue and sniffing or whatever the behavior is. Also, is the great thing about having the parental consent is that if you're not comfortable as a parent and you say, "I don't want my child looking at these questions" or "I don't feel comfortable having these discussions," you get to opt out. You, the student doesn't have to be exposed to it. They won't be talking about it in school. You just say, "Nope, I'm not comfortable with this." And that's fine, and that's your personal choice and the decision you make that's right for your family. So there's absolutely no pressure. The students will not be in trouble if they don't participate. And, you know, it's just one period and it's, the, the family has a choice.
Do you know what the, what the opt-out? I'm curious to know what the opt-out rates are by parents and students.
Fairly low. They've mostly been in Newburyport for this survey in particular, less than 5% every year. And this survey in particular really starts out with those assets. We're really looking at what's strong, what's really going well with the youth in the community. And that's really the focus of this survey and why we wanted to start with the asset survey. So we're starting with what's positive, where are we strong? And then looking to build that momentum as we move forward with the grant.
Do you know how many years Newburyport has been giving this asset and behavior survey into sixth graders?
It's been every other year for the last 13 years.
Okay.
So it's really interesting when you have trend data. And then you can look to see, it's, I'm a data geek, but it's really cool. So we do this now and we're just starting this grant. And then we'll hopefully do the survey again in two years. And in that time, we'll be putting in programs and practice and start talking about this in the community. And you, I promise, you're going to see change at the next data point. Like just by having these discussions and opening up the topic and knowing that how much you guys already support your youth. Like, once you do it intentionally and with specific language, you're going to see change. And that's really empowering and exciting to be able to say like, "Look, we did this. You know, we helped our youth grow and moved them in a positive direction."
Tina would introduce it to the sixth grade kids. She would be there to support that. She, she would, she would be at the parent meeting, you know. So that's what we were saying, we, and we want to make it crystal clear. It is okay to say it's not a survey I want my kids to do. It's really okay. There's no pressure, no, no pressure at all. And we want parents to know that. So we want to give them plenty of opportunities to have access to it. We're not giving them a copy of it because that will, you know, we don't want them showing their children the survey, right? So, but we're, we're more than happy to have them come in, you know, look it over, ask any questions about the questions, whatever it is. And for, but Tina's got a background in this, right? So she, you know, she can talk about the research. She can talk about the experience that other places have. She has a knowledge base that we wouldn't have if we were going to hold a parent meeting. So the fact that we have Tina, you know, I think gives us all more confidence. And she's also would meet with the teachers, you know, particularly the teachers at the sixth grade. And I, I'm an advocate for doing a parent meeting at the seventh grade. That's just my, my personal opinion because I know the challenges we had the last time. And I don't want to repeat that. I think a lot of parents are still concerned in seventh grade, sixth grade definitely, but seventh grade as well, so. But that's part of the, part of the rollout is part of why I think that it's not as dramatic with the kids as it might be if we just literally stuck the survey in front of them. Because she will talk to them about, "If there are any questions on here you don't know about, it's okay to skip it." Right? If it makes you uncomfortable, just skip it. So I think that's, that would, that makes me feel better that the kids, you know, would have a little support.
Well, do we know what questions would be recommended to eliminate for sixth grade ones?
Yes, yes, we did, we did identify.
That is one of the questions I had too, because we have this full survey here. And it would make a difference to me knowing which ones. I mean, are you going to say that all the ones that imply sexual?
Yes.
Yep, so questions 109 and 110 are able to be removed from any grade level that you feel comfortable with. So, and then the students won't see them, it won't be part of their survey. And the other towns that we're working with have opted to take out the sexual behavior questions for grades six. Most are six, seven, eight, but two of the districts are doing just six. But I'm really comfortable taking out whatever's going to make you feel comfortable. And I don't want to put anybody in a situation where you're approving something that you don't feel 100% on board with. So that's definitely an option.
Well, I think it's the superintendent mentioned. I also have flashbacks of a few years ago when this happened. I, you know, it was a very, very difficult time. I'm sure the principal, you can attest to that. It was very difficult.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say a word about those two sexual behavior questions for the seventh grade. Two days ago, I would say take them out. And after a training I attended yesterday, put on by Mark about cyberbullying and sexting and things like that. And they, they, they asked us, you know, everybody, a question. "What do you think happens first, sexual behavior or sexting?" And the answer is sexual behavior. And it's going on in the seventh grade. So as of today, I said, "Keep them in." So I, I know, I, I'll just be repetitive of what everybody's been saying, why I support this. But I think it's safe because there's so many safeguards to this. Parents don't want their kids doing it, they don't have to take it. If the kid doesn't feel like they should take it, they don't have to take it. If the child is taking it and comes across a question they don't like, they can stop. It's pretty much risk-free and it's 100% anonymous. So I don't see why we wouldn't want that information to build a safer environment for our kids.
Mine just goes back to parents feeling that. I, I know, you know, it's a double-edged sword here because when things happen, people will say, you know, "Why didn't the school do something about it?" But then people can also say, "The school shouldn't be involved in certain things." And that, that's where I have my problem. That's just me personally. I just see some of these questions and I, and I'm not naive at all. I'm three teenagers, I'm not naive at all. But the question 111, "How many times, if any, in the last 12 months have you used chewing tobacco or snuff?" Okay, heroin, smack, horse, scag, or other narcotics like opium or morphine? I don't know, I just hope our kids would say zero. And I, well, right, but I, I'm still just hanging with the fact of, of the schools.
So I can address that. So wearing your school committee hat, one of the main pillars of the positive youth developmental is that we're looking at this as a community approach. So we're asking the students to fill out the survey in school because that's where we can ask, access the number, most number of students. But we, so my role is a community coalition builder, not a school coalition builder. So, and we're also surveying the entire community. We're going to be talking to adults and business owners and local government and the police. And so when we put all of this together and report it back to the community, it's going to be a community picture of the community of Georgetown. It's not going to be the school is responsible for X. We're just using the school as a vehicle to reach the students. Not that this is a student or a school survey or that anything that's found on this survey is the sole responsibility of the school to then tackle. And so you guys will get a report and you will have all the data, but you also get a say of what gets reported back. So if we find something, you know, I, I loved your point of that it's important to know what's going on. But if we feel like there's a better way to get that message out to the community, we can be thoughtful about how we frame that and how we get that message out because we'll be in control of the data. Like you mentioned, it's hard to control a situation when it just comes out of the blue and everybody goes, "Well, why didn't you do something?" This model and the, the purpose of gathering this data now is to be proactive so that we can get ahead of it. So we know, we'll have the data and we can say, "Look, we know we have this issue. Let's try and do something to head it off."
Or we don't have an issue.
Exactly, exactly, thank you, yeah.
Well, the rollout is certainly, you know, I, I appreciate that. I definitely think there was a lot of thoughtfulness that went into that. And I do think that that was, that was definitely an issue back in 2014 that it was just not presented effectively. We didn't communicate well enough. So I, I, I do feel that, you know, having parents come out, and I do think seventh grade, I would, I personally, I mean, Peter, I don't know what you feel about.
November 15th, I already got the date. And there's a period of time where they can come in. If, if you are asking my child these questions, I'd want, I'd want to read it. So I'd come in and look at it. So it's not like you have to come in on this night. It's going to be available for a period of time.
Right.
I, I, two questions, and they're like, oh, I don't even know what they are. One is, I think the value, like you were saying, is trend data. I think the one snapshot is nice, but not very useful. So I would say, I would be a lot more comfortable if there was in every other year, whatever that is. In that this is not, I like what you're saying, that this is not a school program. We're using the schools as the building. I would then argue that the school shouldn't have control over what's released. I don't want, if, if there's, whatever the data point is that, that we don't want to share, I don't want to be the one not to share that. Because I don't think, if it's a community survey, I don't think the school should be the one, school committee administration to say, "Well, you know what? We don't want to tell people about this."
Right.
So I would feel pretty strongly that we not, I would like to see the data certainly, but not be involved in the dissemination, deciding what's disseminated.
So we have to approve this because it's happening in the schools. Is that right?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's something that the schools have been, we have conducted surveys.
We've had this in our strategic plan that we do these surveys on a regular basis because we use it to help us with our health and wellness, you know, goals, you know, and what we're doing. And, and I'm really hopeful that we're going to be able to take Georgetown Cares and bring this information, this, with this work plus the work of the Substance Abuse Advisory Panel and for the first time, really be able to do a real community coalition, which Pam has been tirelessly trying to build for, I don't know how many years now. But has been, you know, in many ways, a one-man show. And if it weren't for her commit, continued commitment to it, it wouldn't exist at all. So this is an opportunity to make it be a sustained effort as opposed. And as Margaret pointed out, the work that you're going to hear about in a minute from the PBIS folks, it ties really nicely into the efforts that we're using for social curriculum and responsibility building. So it doesn't work when it's in isolation. It really, it, I feel like this ties into a number of things that we're working on and gives us information and data we don't currently have. We have assumptions that we make, right? But we don't have any more hard data.
And, you know, there needs to be a positive action plan after the survey with the results as there was in 2014.
Right, we did a suicide prevention program that came directly out of that.
Right, specific actions. And I know that, you know, in Newburyport, a lot of very positive things have happened as a result of, you know, working with the data. I mean, working with the, the evidence that they have about the community to put in programs to place that made a real difference. And then, you know, a lot of their, the risk behaviors have really gone down. Positive assets have gone up. The thriving behaviors have gone up. I mean, it's definitely made a great difference for the Newburyport.
Right, and, and just to point out too, that the point of this grant is not to take what Newburyport has done and has worked for Newburyport and just throw it into Georgetown. Georgetown is a completely new entity. Right, and so it's just using that model as a way to work through how we look at the data, how we come together as a coalition and how we build network to help strengthen youth.
But it also might be an impetus for a regional effort if there's a considerable regional need, right? So that, that's the beauty of that as well.
So we'll be looking across the region at the data as well to see what is common and what, how we can work together. But the point is not to be starting to bring like Georgetown comparisons to Salisbury or Amesbury. So we, we don't want to be fostering the competitiveness. We want to be using this as a tool to bring everybody together.
Can I make a motion? Oh, you're going to continue? Sorry, I, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I know we, like, we, it's very hard, this, this heroin question and that, we can talk about that further. But there is going on right now, a very large opioid crisis, of which Massachusetts is the number one state in the country. Or number one for the quality of our education. And we're also number, number one in, in opioid overdose. I thought New Hampshire was. No, no, Massachusetts is. New Hampshire is right next to us there, you know. We're, we may be working together like that. But, um, so, you know, I just, as a parent, I really like, would like to know what our youth, what our students, what my children are facing right now. And I don't have a whole lot of confidence that they're necessarily going to be telling me these things, everything that they hear about this group and that group. You know, I would like to get some really reliable information about what, what our children, what, you know, the, the risks that they're exposed to. So, you know, I, I, to me, I feel, I would feel more secure having this information for the well-being of my children and all the children in the district.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Sure.
There is.
Yeah, you should, you should make a motion to do it.
To, to do it.
To go through with it. Oh, here it is. To approve the administration of the asset survey to students in grades six through 12 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Well, I think she already did.
Oh, oh.
With the as presented or as edited or as, as adjusted?
Upon the recommendation of the administrators.
I don't recommend removing any questions.
He recommends keeping it.
For sixth grade.
For sixth grade.
Yeah, so, sure. So we can move, for sixth grade?
All, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Tina.
Great, thank you all for, for being so patient. Oh, absolutely. I'm actually interested to hear about the PBIS, I'm going to say. If it goes well so, or closely together, then I should know about it.
So we need Margaret's group?
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
There, there, yeah.
Just hoping we have here, we have.
All right, I'm going to go get my.
That's what I, that's what I then thought in the back of my head is that they do.
Sorry, guys, you were really patient. I know, I want to extend my sincerest apologies to all of you as well. I know it's a very long day for all of you. 8:51 right now, so we're definitely late. So I appreciate you being so patient and hanging out with us.
Well, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint, I would like to also thank, this is the partial PBIS committee this year. So we'll just go around and introduce ourselves.
Megan Johnson, a fifth grade teacher at Penruck.
Hi, Megan.
Carrie McMillty, currently long-term subbing all year. Third grade last year.
Elizabeth Carroll, adjustment counselor.
Hope Goine, assistant principal.
Tyler Paulson, new teacher.
And I'd also like to mention Brittany Carvallo, our BCBA, is on the committee and out here tonight. Tiffany Hool, grade four teacher on the committee. Kim Reel, an instructional para. Michelle Rio, who's a kindergarten para and are one of our library tutors. Stacy LeMay, who this year is a grade four teacher. And Caitlin Stam. And Caitlin Stam, who is a sixth grade teacher, are also on the committee. So I, are we, how do you think we're gonna-
I can't get into Google Drive, which is where I present here.
Peter?
Update your browser to use Google Drive.
Do you have your laptop? Yeah, here we go.
So did we figure out if you had an adapter or something?
We need an adapter.
Didn't we have one?
Do you need, is it attached?
There you go.
Okay, here we are, back again. Thank you, we have our technology all ready to go.
Kind of, sort of, kind of, sort of. So our first year at the Penbrook School, when we brought together three schools, um, as you know, kindergarten and first grade from Pearly, second through grade five, and then grade six from the middle school. We spent that first year together, really just figuring out how to be together, how to be in the same space and bring together those cultures. So the second year into, um, school, in the spring of 2016, so in, through that second year, several of us had an opportunity to attend a workshop on PBIS. And, uh, we spent the whole day learning about PBIS, what it is, what it looks like, the many prongs of it. And so last year, we decided that one of our goals would be to investigate and figure out what PBIS would look like at the Penbrook School. So one of our SIP goals and one of the things we did throughout the year was to form a PBIS committee. So I'd like to thank, um, Kim Reel, Amy Wall, Carrie McNulty, Kristen Powers, Stacy LeMay, Elizabeth Carroll, Brittany Carvallo, Hope and I were on that committee last year, spending the year, looking at how PBIS could look at the Penbrook School. So, second slide. So, um, Penbrook is a process for creating safer and more effective schools. It's a research-based behavior support system, a unified system to promote our CARES values, and it's not a program or curriculum. So I, I would just like to read, um, this is, if you go to the PBIS website and on the one-page handout you've got, there is the link to that. And, um, what PBIS says is, it's funded by the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Special Education Programs, um, the Technical Assistance Center on PBF, PBIS. This helps to build systems capacity for implementing a multi-tiered approach to social, emotional, and behavioral support. And what PBIS is, one of the prongs is that it's an RTI system, just the same way we look at academics in our school. Always looking at how children are responding, um, achievement in math and, um, and ELA. And then if children are not reaching the benchmark, we provide intervention. We provide a system of looking at children in our, um, student assistance team where, um, professionals are, again, working with a classroom teacher to figure out why the child isn't making progress. So one of the prongs of PBIS is doing the same kind of, uh, structure for children with social, emotional, and behavioral issues. So a teacher might, um, bring a child to the committee and we're trying to figure out what's going on for that child. We're looking at data to see, um, how children are responding to the rules in the school. So again, it's that multi-tiered, it, that really is the basis of it, it's a multi-tiered program. The broad purpose of PBIS is to improve the effectiveness, efficiency, and equity of schools and other agencies. PBIS improves social, emotional, and academic outcomes for all students, including students with disabilities and students from underrepresented groups. Again, the PBIS model is something that supports our core values of cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. And unfortunately, the video that we had and would show you at this point is, um, web-based, so we can't go online, I guess we can't access the internet. But the point of the, the video, um, it's a wonderful video, and if you get a chance to go to it, it talks about if children can't read, we help teach them to read. If they can't swim, we help teach them to swim. And learning the social, emotional, and behavioral norms of a society and of our school are the same. So we don't punish children who don't know how to do those things, we teach them. And further along in this, um, PowerPoint, there is a slide, um, slide ten, that, um, when we get to it, Hope will discuss. But basically to reiterate that we don't just let children flounder, we wanna give them the skills to, um, succeed. So our, um, so our mission.
Our mission, um, statement, we worked together to come up with this mission statement as a group, to work together as a school to establish and sustain effective school-wide and individual behavior supports needed to enhance academic, social, and behavioral outcomes of all students. And the committee worked together to develop that mission statement last year. Um, we also worked on defining behaviors, and as a committee, we made a matrix of all the areas of the school. So the playground, the cafeteria, the hallways, the stairwell, the classroom, and what the expectations are, they go with our CARES acronym. So what does cooperation look like in the cafeteria? What does it look like in the hallway? And we kind of laid that out as a committee and aligned that with our CARES. We created a universal language, and if, if you've been over to Penbrook, you may notice there's very colorful posters, um, throughout the building. And Carrie, I think, ran that subcommittee at our PD Day last year, um, and the teachers actually designed the posters that are on display throughout the building. And they have the expectations, the voice levels, which we'll talk about in a minute, for students, just to give them those visual reminders of the expectations that we're constantly reinforcing with kids. Um, this is an example of our volume poster, and you can see to go around, along with the school in the woods, the teachers designed, you know, a little sprout going into a tree to go with the volume. And every poster with expectations has a volume expectation on it. And that, we review these with students so they know where the expectations are for volume. Obviously, at four, if they're out on the playground at recess and they're playing with their friends, they're gonna be at a four volume. Um, if they're working quietly in a group with their classmates, the teachers can remind them, oh, you're at a two. And we have these visuals in all the classrooms for the kids. Um, they're familiar with the language and the teachers reinforce that with them. We are asking students, um, this year, and this is new, to walk in the hallways when they're transitioning between classes at a zero volume. And that's just so that everybody can work and it's quiet, so when you're walking by classrooms, you're respectful, so that other kids can hear and work. And, um, we have been reinforcing that with kids as well. There's another example here, here's one of our posters, and we have one for all the general areas in the school, but this is a cafeteria poster. So they're at a two volume, they're talking at their table with their friends, and then we have all the expectations about being safe, be responsible, be respectful, and kind of the expectations for the cafeteria. You're gonna use polite table manners, manners, you're gonna give staff your attention, you're gonna clean up your space and your table and your floor, you're gonna work on theme notes. And we reiterate this with kids and kind of reinforce it with them. Okay? And this is in the PBIS video that we couldn't show, it is on our webpage for the, um, Penbrook. It's kind of thinking about a child, if a child can't do something, we teach them. So if they can't read, we teach them. If they can't swim, we teach them, they take swimming lessons. If they can't multiply, we teach. Um, if they don't know how to drive, they go to driver's ed and we teach them. And that same premise, if a child doesn't know how to behave, do we punish them or teach them? And we're really working on teaching them. And as a school, reinforcing our expectations and reviewing them with students. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Wall, she's gonna talk a little bit about the teaching behavior, a little more detail to that.
Sure. So I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like at school. Um, we have, as a team, created a lot of lesson plans, all the way from kindergarten through sixth grade. Um, we are, the kids are being exposed to the explicit teaching of each of the character traits every month, um, in all different places throughout the school. So they're being taught, um, in library classes, they're being taught by their classroom teachers, um, and they're also being taught by, um, my, adjustment counselors, um, Hope, Officer Oshinsky, uh, the PE teachers, the BCBA. So all of us are working together as a team to go into the classrooms and teach whole class lessons, um, explicitly around the character trait for every month. I'll put that. Yeah, it's great, and we, so we've sort of, um, gathered all of our resources together, um, that we have already. So, um, you know, there were, there were no curriculums that we needed to purchase, we just needed to dig a little deeper and, and organize it, um, as a team. So I think we've done a really great job, um, in sort of covering all the grade levels between all the staff members, and there's been a lot of like co-teaching that's, that's happened with it too, which is really nice. The next slide is gonna show you what we teach every month. So, um, of course, for the first few months of school, we're teaching the CARES acronym. Um, so this month, we're working on the character trait of assertion, the next month, it'll be responsibility, December is empathy, January is slash control, February is friendship, March is acceptance, April honesty, May respect, and June gratitude. And so after we were done with, um, the CARES acronym, we decided what were some of those core values that we felt were really important, um, that we needed to explicitly teach. So, um, students are also being exposed to the character trait of the month in our community gatherings. So every month, um, we will showcase the, um, character trait, and I think-
This was cooperation.
This one was cooperation.
Yeah, it was actually my class.
Yeah. Um, and so kids are doing skits to, um, role-playing what cooperation looks like in different parts of the school. Um, so kids are really, they're hearing it every morning on the announcements, um, every morning, they're reminded what the character trait of the month is, what it means, and what it looks like.
Sorry, Amy, I'm just gonna jump in. The other, um, the other place this is being reinforced is in our maker space. So I know some of you had visited earlier in the month, and September was cooperation. And so in the maker space classes, it was being reinforced that when children were working together to create projects and do activities, they were reminded, this is cooperation, this is how you're working together to create something. So it really is being embedded in all aspects of the school.
So we wanted to just, um, put this slide in to give you an example of what, um, the students will see in the upper grades. This is a slide that, um, Elizabeth and Hope might use when they're teaching fifth and sixth grade classes, um, so that, you know, it's consistent, our teaching is consistent and, and the kids get the main messages of what assertion is. So that's just one, an example of one of the slides that they would put up there. But it does tie in perfectly with Say Something, which is a program and initiative that, um, came out of Sandy Hook. Um, and we were made aware of that, I think, by Carol.
Yep.
Um, and so it, it really is perfect because, um, Say Something Week is next week.
Next week.
Yeah, the sixteenth. Um, and they have a fantastic website where, um, there's just so much information. So Elizabeth and I sat together on the PD Day and we pulled a lot of information from Say Something Week that we can use in our lessons.
Because the, the Say Something really is an initiative for grades six through twelve.
Mm-hmm.
So we did wanna bring that into the sixth grade, but again, it does, it fits absolutely perfectly with assertion and what it is.
Right.
That it's, it's really, what it is, is taking care of people, it's standing up for yourself and taking care of other people. So in the lower grades, we're not really discussing, not at all, not really, we're not discussing the Sandy Hook, but it is talking about the assertion and how, um, helping someone and, and also, um, having the confidence to stand up for yourself, that's what being assertion is.
And we did tie that in this week, Hope and I, and, uh, Mike Walsh, and also, also Officer Oshinsky met with the fifth and sixth graders, and they went through lessons on, um, bullying and also cyber safety, tying into the assertion piece. And they were exposed to this idea of Say Something, standing up for other people, letting us know if you see someone who's in need, and it really tied in really nicely with the assertion lessons this week. Okay. This, um, slide kind of tells you a little bit about what it actually looks like and how to get our kids to really buy into this, because it's a great idea for us, but to get them excited about it and get them to buy into it, we decided to again, go again with our idea of the school in the woods. So the kids, um, earn these lovely leaves. And they earn them in a way like, let's say, for example, first of all, classroom teachers don't give their classes leaves. The leaves are handed out by teachers from other places or support staff, people on the playground, people in the cafeteria, noticing the kids making good choices. So for example, if I'm walking along or in the cafeteria and I happen to see Cheryl in, and poor Suzanne is walking around, she has no place to sit and she's got her tray and she's looking and she's looking, and Cheryl goes, oh, Suzanne, right here, there's a spot. So I go to Cheryl, Cheryl, I noticed that you had empathy for Suzanne, it's one of our core values, and I noticed that you did so, so I'm putting your name on this, I want you to give it to your teacher. So then Cheryl's job is now to take her leaf when she goes back to the classroom and tell her teacher she got this leaf and why she got it. Now, the teachers collect the leaves for a week and they tally them all up, and then they send that, that number to Hope, who keeps track of how many the different classrooms are making, and we announce that in the morning announcement, so the kids are kind of under seeing whose class is earning leaves. So they're adding them up. Oh, one of the ways you can-
You're also making it a little competitiveness.
Absolutely, and it really does, it kind of sparks the kids to go-
It kind of sparks the kids to go, oh, Mrs. Wool's class is getting all these leaves. And so they start to work even harder. Every day when, at the end of their meal, their teachers come into the cafeteria, and they look to see, is the table clean? Is under the table clean? If they've taken care of that, they get a five-point leave. So now it's not just one point, it's five points for their class. So a little more motivation for them. So after a class hits a hundred leaves, they can earn a special incentive. And they're going to, the teacher's going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. But what they do is they trade their leaves, and they go down and they get the golden leaf. So for a hundred leaves, they get the golden leaf. And those leaves get displayed. As you can see here, we have a hallway on this, actually over to the right side. There is a tree branch. Is it on the next slide? Can we see it? It's on the tree branch. So as you gain these hundred leaves, you get, classrooms will start building them up. If a whole grade level gets up to a thousand leaves, like a third grade, third grade, all five, all four third grades, gets up to a thousand leaves, the whole group can get an incentive. So the whole class, the all four, all four classes together will do something, earn something special for themselves. And we keep adding
Can you give us an idea of what the incentives are?
We're going to in just a minute. The teachers are going to give you all that. And then we're also working on creating incentives for the whole school. Our target is 25,000 leaves for the whole school to have a celebration towards the end of the year, moving on. So we're really, the kids
Move our office to the roof.
You can hear, you can hear the conversations. You can hear the kids saying, I got a leave for this. And, oh, our class is already up to 300, and their classes. So they really have bought into it. And it's really nice to see the looks on their faces when you just sort of catch them in the oddest little moments. Like, you know, I saw a little girl the other day. They were walking in in the morning, and her friend was in front of her. And she said, I really like the bow in your hair. Second grade, and I went, give me a minute. Hey, I noticed that compliment you gave your friend. So we carry these around with us wherever we go.
We have to walk around the hall.
We walk around the hall, the kids see us there. Here we are. Pulling them in.
And I just want to jump in because the, what we're asking classroom teachers, and the reason why, if somebody gets a leaf, they go back and tell their teacher, is because classroom teachers are keeping track of who's getting the leaf. Because this is the opportunity, you know, as I've been saying, we don't want to just acknowledge the child who maybe does show, you know, a difficulty with either behavior or emotion. That they always get the leaf if today, you know, they didn't act out or, you know, were inappropriate, now you get a leaf today. But we want to make sure that we're acknowledging the children who are under the radar and often don't go unnoticed because they're always doing the right thing. That everyone has a chance and an opportunity to be acknowledged. And the other day, when I was in the office, two little first graders, again, coming in and just having the responsibility to put their folders on the counter with the lunch, the lunch tickets. And they did it without any help, and they got two tickets to take back to their class. So it really is just acknowledging, every, everyone will have an opportunity to be acknowledged for how they operate in the school.
Now we'll hand it over to you folks, and you can talk about incentives.
To piggyback on the leaves real quick too. If they're individual leaves, you know, some of the teachers give them to the students to take home after they've been taught, so they can share with their parents. My own child has come home, and the first thing he's done is opened his backpack and showed me a leaf that he had. And so as a parent, it's nice to see that coming home as well.
I can even speak in the classroom. It's so nice to see when, like, I have a student like, oh, you know, Jacob just got a leaf in the hallway, he's going to come in and share it. So they get excited for each other, even if it's like an individual leaf. So, and even when they see other kids in the hallway, and they, so it's kind of nice. They're all kind of very supportive of each other when it comes to the leaves.
They like to get them announced. They'll say, Mrs. Dorn, it's going to be on announcements. We've got another hundred leaves for the class. They like to hear that.
So this poster is an example of some of the incentives that a fourth grade class brainstormed together. So they have, students have input as to what they consider worth their time and energy.
So you can see in that a lot of the, like, the extra indoor. So all of these are not, like, you don't have to pay for them. So everything like we do is so
We like that.
Yes. And it's actually funny, my class, when we reached our first hundred leaves, we were brainstorming lists, and someone was like, we make slime. And another girl raised, that will cost Mrs. McMelty too much money to make slime. I was like, well, thanks for recognizing that. But we just did, we reached our first one. The kids, we wrote it on a list, and we, I have a list similar to that, as I think it's Mrs. Wool's. And we voted on what we got, and we kept. We're going to keep the list. So I'm like, so everyone kind of, their ideas throughout the year, we probably will get to. So our first thing we did was extra recess and had snack outside. And it was like the best thing ever. They loved it. And they're already excited. We're at like 275 leaves. And they're like, we only need 25 more to get to our 300. And so they're already planning out our next incentive that we're going to do. And they've been noticing too, that they've been talking with the whole grade because they can see all the other golden leaves. And they're like, how much longer till we get to our 1,000? So they're recognizing the other classrooms as well.
So this is an example of a class, actually my class, who was able to use the Makerspace as their reward time. So it's a little, it's still engaging academically, but it's also kind of fun because it's outside of their normal school routine.
And they love Stuffed Animal Day. Doesn't matter what grade, they all love to bring their stuffed animal. So I know my class, that's Mrs. Wool's class, my class had a stuffed animal day as well. They just had their little guy with them all day and got to work with them.
And then the extra recess.
Well, and I'll just comment, the reason why this was so special, this is actually a first grade class, Mrs. Boisel. And normally, their recess is on the primary side. But their choice was to have the recess on the intermediate side. So they got to go on the big, big kid playground.
Another idea, reading the stuffed animals. So the focus, again, is not on punitive, you know, you did this wrong, but rather reteaching when something doesn't go right. I mean, even still today, October 12th, I walked my class back down after lunch because we were having a hard time walking the hallway. And we got it right the second time, and I gave them props for that. That's kind of, that's just the cycle that we keep going through.
So another, the other component of PBIS is the response to intervention. So that's where we have our different tiers. And the tier one is our curriculum that we have been using, that the committee designed to teach. But we also have been keeping data on students that may struggle in the classroom. So we designed a behavior tracking sheet that teachers can use in their classroom to kind of monitor our CARES values and if students are kind of struggling in certain areas. And as they submit those behavior trackers and things, the committee can take a look and be able to identify students that would benefit from extra support. We haven't got completely to the tier two part correctly with our committee.
Tier two would come out of, that is where, when we're looking at the data and noticing classroom teachers are keeping track of maybe how often they're having to remind a particular child of classroom routines or there's an issue in the classroom. And so when they're noticing three or four times, the teacher might elect to bring that child to our, again, our student assistance team to look at what might be causing this child to, you know, have these behaviors. So in that tier two model, and the menu of options would be, coming out of that, how can we help this child? Would it be, you know, an informal behavior plan? Would it be giving them an extra sticker if they are able to follow the rules? So it's just coming up of looking at that child, how we're going to collect more data, change something in their environment, provide more support, and then come back together to see if that's made a difference in how they're doing.
So we, there's no one fit solution for every child because we can create a number of different things that can help the student. And overall, we want to just be able to create a positive learning environment in our school. And PBIS has helped us been able to do that. And we are in the process of setting up that structure within our school so that we can teach the program and then monitor the students that may be having some trouble. And then be able to provide some sort of support for them so that they can, again, go back and be able to be acknowledged for their behavior and then associate with the school. So we want to give every student a chance to be able to shine and recognize. And that's why we kind of do the leaves the way that we do acknowledging students and their behavior. Because we want everyone to be able to be acknowledged. And we also want to provide support for the students that seem to struggle with some of our core values at our school. Anything else for you?
Well, I just, I want to just say that in my school council meeting the other day, when we were talking about PBIS, and a couple of the suggestions were that there is an impression that, yes, PBIS is a positive reinforcement, but that it's all positive. That we don't look at any of the behaviors that, you know, if children exhibit hitting, if somebody hits, how we acknowledge that? Or are we just going to give them a leaf? And so I, you know, I do want to talk about that. And what came out of it was that every month, I will also try to highlight a component of PBIS in my this week to discuss what that looks like in reality. Because it is a positive behavior system, that is the point of it. And one thing I talked about, we don't punish children. That's not, we're not in the job to punish. So even when a child does something that breaks a rule or becomes physical, it's not punishment that they're getting, they get consequences. And then, again, looking at how we can restructure their environment to help them be successful. So it's a, it's a misnomer that we don't provide those opportunities to help teach children. It's, and, but we do it in a positive way. Again, it's not punishing children, but it is having them accept consequence for their actions. And then there's an element of that restorative justice, how they will make it up to either their peers or the school. And then we go on. So children are still, we still adhere to the handbook. There are still rules and behaviors that we expect in the school. But it's how the structure we're going to provide children to help them be successful.
Thank you for adding that in, because I was going to ask about that.
Yes. And that's, again, that is, it's, it's still positive. And I will put it in that positive way, that it's not punishing children. But we do expect certain behavior. And when children do not, are not able to follow that behavior, there are consequences for it. Again, it's not punished consequences, but it's how they're going to take responsibility for it.
And be taught.
And be taught how to do it a better way. Right, exactly.
But definitely consequences.
I'm very interested in PBIS. I think it's great. I know when we talked about it at the very beginning, I was interested in it. I know Pam is showing a lot of interest in it. And I think it's great. I think it's a great thing that the whole community has. I almost feel like we should go around with leaves giving them to adults.
Right, twins. Well, have there been any challenges with leaves giving them out? Or like, because I know teachers give them out, but not to their class. If they can give them to other classes.
I, and again, I will ask others to, yeah.
I know, so at first, I, I mean, leaves were going out like crazy the first few weeks. And then like, at one point, I was noticing, okay, like, they're doing the right thing all the time now. And now they're expecting the leaves. So they're like, looking around, they're like, they'll look in a classroom like, why aren't they giving me? And so in my, so classrooms themselves can do their own incentives. So in my class, like, we're doing a gem jar. So like, I'll say, you know what? You guys did an awesome job walking to music today. I'm going to go throw some gems in. Or when you come back, we'll add some gems. So now they have a classroom incentive too. And even individual, like, I'll notice someone doing something really nice in the classroom. Why don't you go drop a gem in our jar?
So what does the gem jar do?
It's the same thing at the end. So like, we actually filled our gem jar. Same idea as like when they get a hundred leaves. We had that same list, and actually, one week, they got lucky. They got the hundred leaves and the gem jar. So we did a longer incentive. They're doing really well. But that's how I kind of addressed not getting the leaf every single time in the hallway. Because sometimes you're not going to see another adult in the hallway. Or, you know, things are happening.
Right, and you don't want the kids to feel like, oh, if there's no one in the hallway, I'm not going to do something else.
But what it really has done, and because the first couple of years of being together, all of us in the school, 700 children and 100 adults, it was
Chaos.
Thank you. I don't want to say that because it was, you know, happy chaos. Children are happy. But just what happens is, when some children are happy, when you have 100 happy children in the halls, it makes other kids unhappy when they're in their room and trying to do their work, and they can't concentrate. So what this has done is just allowed everyone, given them the expectations for how we want the school to look and sound. And now, when you see a class, a fifth grade class walk by silently, you don't even notice them, they get a leaf. What a nice job and how respectful they are for, you know, other people in the school. So it's, you can just tell the difference.
I want to add to that, Margaret, that also, I think, as a staff, going through this process was really helpful to all of us to clarify those things. Because we all came in, you know, the sixth grade came down, kindergarten came up, and then there were the middle of us. We all came, we came in with different expectations. And going through this process of really identifying, really helped the staff, I think, to bond and get a clear vision. So I think now we can give that to the kids because we're all on the same page. So there isn't that confusion that I think we had early on. So it's been really good.
What's the, I think I'm, I'm not seeing a total correlation between the leaves, the acknowledging, congratulating, whatever the appropriate word is for the good. But then we're also, to Mr. Paulson's point, we're being blinded. We're sending in sheets of when a student is behaving poorly. Where do those two things, where are they intersecting or interacting?
So they intersect because, again, there are the two prongs. It's acknowledging students for, again, adhering to our core values. But a major component of PBIS is that data collection and how we help students who are not able to adhere to that. So that is that second prong, that we're collecting that data and looking at children who are having difficulties so that we can, can provide that additional support in the same way that we provide the support, you know, academically.
But is, I guess I'm not seeing how, and sorry if I'm belaboring a point.
No, that's all right.
If a student is walking through a hall quietly every day and is getting a leaf, obviously not every day, to your point of, you know, the expectations are growing sort of as the year's going along. I guess I'm not seeing how that data point is relating to that student behaving poorly in, and I'm just going to pick on you, in a music class. How, how are those aspects?
Well, it may or may not. And I don't, I don't know that, it may or may not. One, I would, I would hypothesize that when students are aware of their expectations and then acknowledged for really following it, or either making an effort to follow it, or just following it because they intrinsically do, it gives them that boost to want to, again, succeed, success breeds success. So in that way, it, you know, it provides the support. It could be that when children are recognized for that, that maybe some of those other behaviors where they were having difficulty, it might mitigate some of that. But regardless if it mitigates or not, we're going to collect that data, look at who is having difficulty, and then provide support. So it might have that halo effect on children, and that is the hope. You know, is, we're saying, we all notice a difference in just the general field. It doesn't mean that children aren't having difficulty, and we're dealing with that. But there is an overall sense of just children understanding what the rules are and everyone holding them with the same expectations. So again, I would say that there is that general effect that it has, and then provide support.
Margaret, can I add onto that? So to, sorry to jump in. Michael, to your point, the way that the teachers are collecting and turning in that data is couched in the same core values as the positive aspect for the students that may not be showing cooperation or may not be showing empathy or anything else in that CARES model. And to this team's credit and to Tyler's credit, they've made those data collection forms so that they follow the same core values and models so that we can reward the good stuff with the same language that we can recognize what might need to be improved upon using the same language. And I know that, you know, we had a faculty meeting yesterday, and that process is still being refined as those data sheets are getting turned in. And so that we can draw that comparison between the positive incentives and improving some of the behaviors with the same language.
So we're keeping track of specific behaviors, like within cooperation, like being defined disrespectful. So we're looking for specific behaviors aligned with our values.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you. You all should get a leaf for being so We'll give you a leaf. Five-point leave, for example. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you coming out.
Very much. Margaret, did you want to, I know the committee had asked about the Sandy Hook promise.
promise, so you highlighted your, your work with assertion.
Yes.
Could you spend a few minutes talking about some of these things that you have planned and then Peter can do that as well?
Well, again, the, the Sandy Hook, it really was an initiative for grade six through grade twelve. So, in the sixth grade, because we, we already are working with the structure of Hope, Officer Oshavsky.
Elizabeth Carroll.
Hard to sort out, would you go to the left side? Elizabeth Carroll and Michael Walsh. The structure is already in place that we're going into classrooms and presenting information on, you know, particular topics. So, this month, it is assertion. So, those small lessons, those well-being lessons are around assertion. And when we're looking at what Sandy Hook is, the initiative, it really is about helping and when you're, they do talk about the gun violence, we're not bringing in the gun violence part as much as it is about, it is about saying something when you see somebody in trouble. And if you notice that someone's having difficulty, how you help them. And that message is brought down into the other grades, so even though that really is not the Sandy Hook piece, but it does speak to what assertion is and what we hope that we can help instill in our children. So, that's, again, how we're tying it into the Say Something.
Yeah, and they have a number of resources that are available that I know Elizabeth was drawing from, you know, in terms of some of the activities and things like.
Because, again, it really does, it fits so perfectly with what our CARES value and the assertion piece and does just happen to be this month. Peter, could you come talk about that for a minute? For Peter's back.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Hope. Because Heidi said she gave you all the information on this when I talked to her this morning.
She gave it to you? Off the top of my head, then. Well, I think the centerpiece of this is that we're having an assembly and we're actually having somebody from that organization come next week and talk about the program and kind of a training in what signs to look for and stuff like that. And they're going to do it in conjunction with our school resource officer, who's going to kind of tie it into Alice also. And we've been, we're, we're having kind of a theme of the day, every day, posters around the school.
Which classroom they have, what does it say, if you, I'm listening or something, there's some kind of a poster that says, I'm listening if you see, if you need to talk with me. And so, all the teachers have those in their, in their rooms. I know that that was something.
Yep.
Came out of that.
So, and then where, where I just talked to Carol about, they have an anonymous kind of like hotline and we're going to decide if that's something that the district wants to get involved in.
It's free, it's kind of an app, you know, like people can report.
Yep, and then they, they kind of...
Yeah, they, they figure out if it's a...
They sift through it and try to, you know, yeah. And if it's something that they think is serious, then they'll contact us, so.
And Heidi was talking about the advisory block.
Yep.
In the middle school was going to be devoted to...
And the peer leaders are doing some things also.
They have different themes, right?
Yep.
For each day. So, I just printed this out from the internet, so like the first day it's Empowerment Monday and United in Action Tuesday, Wednesday is Keep the Peace, Thursday is School Safety, Friday is Why I Say Something.
So, as they said, there's a lot of materials on this. There's a guidebook that has many more activities than you could ever do, but the goal was to take advantage of the fact that it's that week, tie it into all of the initiatives we're doing around safety and the messaging we're doing and just really take advantage of the resources that were there. And I do want to thank Maggie Van Galen who had seen this and had brought it to our attention and, you know, the principals, you know, kind of took it and ran with it with their staff and their kids, and they're involving the kids, which is, which is great.
Yeah, the website is, is really informative.
Yeah, it is.
It has a lot of information on there and, and even just talking to your kids at home about it, you know, just giving them, you know, empowering them to know that they can make a difference.
So, on October nineteenth, the high school's going to have an assembly with this person from Sandy Hook, right?
Oh, both schools.
Yeah, and then the, yeah, the middle school and high school have two different times though, right? One is at ten forty-five and the other one is at eight twenty-five.
Yeah, only because we can't fit everybody in the...
And then on November eighth, they're, they're also, this isn't the Sandy Hook promise, but they're also doing, we learned about this at safety this morning, they're also doing a, a training on civil rights because that, they're finding, we're finding nationally that more and more of the issues around bullying and violence are, are having to do with civil rights, the protected classes. So, there's going to be a training for the kids on that. And then on November twenty-ninth, Henry is actually working with a pharmacist from CBS. This is also another program that's out there to talk about opioids with the kids. So, that's going to happen on, on November twenty-ninth.
What grade is that?
All grades.
All grades.
All grades, seven to twelve?
Yeah, and I, I think that Peter will post all of these things. I asked Heidi, you know, how is this stuff going to get out so parents know that these things are happening? Heidi said it will be, all be posted.
Yep.
Is it like on the morning announcements in separate...
That's probably the best vehicle, really. I think that's where most people are kind of accustomed to.
On the website, yeah.
Or, or on a, or on a blurb, yeah, because your website, you usually break things down like that, so. But I just wanted you to know that we did learn that safety today, that there's a lot of good programming that's going on around, not only this, but this topic and theme.
Right, and I think it's valuable time spent, you know, these days.
The opioid one, I really, I really wanted to do it last year. Henry brought it to my attention last spring, but I just couldn't fit it in and I thought it was so important and I wanted everybody to do that, but the focus of that is prescription opioids and how it begins.
And there's going to be a CBS pharmacist that's going to do that, right?
Yeah, yep. Mm-hmm. A pharmacist does it, yeah.
Andy Lee?
I'm not sure.
I don't...
I'm not sure who he is.
Is the head pharmacist there?
I don't think, I don't think it's from Georgetown.
It may not be, it may not be a local. It's kind of CBS has sort of taken this on as a national thing.
Yeah.
Right. That'd be really good to have.
Yeah.
Good. We love seeing that.
Yeah, so, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we want to talk about the MCAS testing.
Oh, yeah, that's very, that's quick, that's very quick. Colin, Colin, Margaret and I sat in on a webinar this morning, which I'll share much more information with you when, when the results are, you know, come out. But this was by tomorrow, every district had to decide what grades they were going to do the online testing. In the next year, eighteen, nineteen, every grade, in three through, in three through ten, is required to do it online. So, we had a conversation, as I said to you in the orange notes, our recommendation is that in grades four through nine, we do it online. Ten is still not an online test, they're calling it a legacy MCAS, so it's still paper and pencil.
It's not an online through the state, not because you're choosing.
No, no, it's still a paper and pencil statewide test. That'll change eventually too, but right now. And then we decided that third grade would be paper and pencil.
What was the reason for that?
We just felt that, that the third grade students were not ready for it.
But even though they have the iPads and all the technology...
Well, they don't have the...
That actually is part of it, they, they don't have it.
They don't have it.
They don't have it. I thought every grade had it.
Well, every grade has a five in the classroom and we do have a card.
They rotate them.
But it would be...
They would rotate, they would ro, they...
It would be difficult for a whole grade to do it because, right, we could rotate among the class, but if we're going to ask children to have assessments, then we really need to make sure that in their daily lives, they are using those iPads to work and we simply don't have...
So, then the following year, you'll make sure that, I mean, how's that going to work?
Well, I think next year, we're going to have to expose kids to it more often than they are now because you don't want the following year when it counts for them to be the first time they've ever used iPad. We just felt that this year, we couldn't necessarily commit to the amount of time so that kids would be ready for it in the spring, but we know that we have to engage them with the iPads more often. Now, Mary Ann Fravel, or not Mary Ann, not Mary Ann anymore, but the person who's the Mary Ann, she does, she does work with the kids on, you know, working on computers and I'm sure she's teaching them some of the drop and drag and some of the things that, you know, kids have to do. I know kids are working on, you know, a little writing, you know, on the computer, but nothing as formal as we think it would need to be in order for kids to be prepared.
But in order to be proactive, wouldn't she be working with the second grade now to prepare them for a third grade next year?
Well, I mean, again, we, our, I agree with you, Suzanne, we just, we're, devices are, are, are a challenge for us right now, so we, they are on the computers in their computer time and they, there are mobile carts, I guess you would say, right? So, there's regular, the cart, there's carts in every classroom in four, five and six, but anything below that, there are carts for the whole school that classroom teachers can sign up and, and take out. And as Margaret said, there are kids exposed to some types of computers with the five kind of computers that are in the classroom. We just felt like it was going to be more than our third graders were going to be ready to do this year, but we did have a conversation about it because we know, I think we're all kind of secretly hoping that the state's going to change its mind and say that that's really not a good idea, but...
Well, they could.
They could, they could.
They certainly could. I know talking to a few third grade parents last year when we talked about it being on the computer.
Yeah.
They, they sensed frustration with that.
Yeah.
They preferred to have the pen and paper because, I know it's not, they're not timed at third grade, but some of the parents still felt that the kids weren't really prepared for that. But they're still doing this.
It's a, it's a very big, it's a very big difference, writing on the computer than, than drafting. So, I mean, we're hoping that that's the best decision, you know, we do feel like, like eighth grade's going to be a little bit of a challenge for us because the eighth graders don't yet have their own device, remember? But, so we'll do again what we did last year, which is, you know, take, bring them, bring them. And, yeah, I mean, I know it's not ideal, but it, you know, we, we felt that it was not a good, would not be a good plan to not have the eighth graders take the test online.
And what do they have on a day-to-day basis to, the eighth grade, to be exposed to?
Peter, what, what is the answer to that question? What are the, what does the eighth graders have on a day-to-day basis as terms of exposure?
They have the iPad cards. And we don't have many of them.
Their own devices.
They don't want you to think that they have a lot of access to technology, you know.
It's the same thing as third grade, they don't have the access.
But they're eighth graders.
They're more, they're more experienced at it, but, yeah.
Carts that were available last year are a little more available this year since we have three levels that have one-to-one, so those are a little more freed up, but again, it's not like they're using them as one-to-one devices.
But they can go into the library.
There's a lot of homework, I recall, that would be done.
You work on the computer.
At home.
Yeah, but many of them have computers at home.
Yeah, they were, and they have just more experience typing.
Typing, yeah.
A lot more experience.
Yeah, but in terms of, you know, having access to an iPad at your fingertips, you know, like the seventh grade has, we'd need to do one more year of that, but by the time the eighteen, nineteen thing happens, it'll, we'll have caught up with that.
Right.
And then we'll find out more about what's going to happen with the tenth grade test at some point, you know, you know it's going to go online. And they are talking about maybe making an eleventh grade test.
Can I just ask a quick question about the, the iPad, the one-to-one?
Sure.
Since it's started and been rolled out, have there been people buy-in who initially opted out?
Yeah, so we had an additional order of twenty more iPads because after the pickup days at the beginning of the school year, we had a lot of parents that either thought that they had signed up based on an initial survey and not realized that there were more steps than just checking a box and they wanted, they wanted in. There were also more families that took advantage of the scholarship opportunities after realizing that they did qualify. So, of the twenty that we ordered, I think thirteen were, have already been claimed and are, have been set up and thankful to the business office who are taking those payments because we couldn't go through fax for those latecomers because that window had closed, so we had to kind of take the, take the checks, mail that to the town and get them in their hands. But, yeah, we had, we had another thirteen, fourteen people that were interested in some wish of it.
Are we, are we within the scholarship limits that we thought we'd be at or are we exceeding?
Yeah, I think, Suzanne, you might have a little better idea, but I think we're around ten students for scholarships, which is around the percent of free and registered that we had been, we had estimated based on the recommendations from other scholarships.
Okay. Okay. So, I will make a motion to administer the MCAS twenty eighteen testing grades four through nine on the computer and use paper and pencil for grades three as well as grade ten.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we just have to approve the updated list of homeschool students. There's twenty-one on that list.
There are twenty-one and it represents eleven families. I noticed that. So, there's siblings, yeah.
It was a different format.
It was a different format.
Yeah.
Oh, dear.
Yeah.
Got it, yeah.
That's not a bad, it just, it just looked different than last year, I was like, what is this?
Yeah, she, she, I think Donna had it more on the table.
Yeah, never.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the list of homeschool students as presented.
So moved.
Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, because of the time, I am going to ask that we hold any subcommittee reports for the next meeting if we could. It's just getting late at this point. There is no reason for us to have an executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty PM.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, good night.